Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, December 14th, 2020. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 6th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 6th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 6th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. On October 5th, 2020, a notice was sent to both the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger that this meeting would be held remotely using communication equipment via Zoom due to COVID-19 restrictions. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. For the applicants and any members of the public that are listening to the hearing, when the chairman opens the hearing up for each application, the attorney and the applicant will be brought into the meeting along with any other professionals. When the hearing is opened up for public comment, then members of the public need to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and they will be brought into the meeting one at a time. You will need to be sworn in, you will need video and audio, and you will need to give your name and address. And that is for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
I have not heard from Mr. Moretti. Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
I have not heard from Mr. Orozco. Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Cantor has been excused. Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of America. One nation, one nation. Indivisible, indivisible, liberty, liberty. Justice, justice.
Thank you. Mr. Troply, you mind swearing in the professionals, please?
Sure. Professionals, please stand. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self of God.
I do.
I do.
Okay, thank you. The record should reflect tonight. We have Mr. Cunliffe, Ms. Beam, Mr. Howard, and Ms. Spiro all sworn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on.
Approval of minutes.
There are no minutes this evening.
Vouchers?
I have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondence?
I have no correspondence this evening.
Wow. Resolutions. Case number BA 1315A, GF United Realty LLC, resolution granting conditional use variance, preliminary and final major site plan approval with bulk variances, eligible voters Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Seiya, Cantor, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hughes.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, thank you. Eileen, you want to try to reach out to Mr. Moretti, or?
Sure. I just texted both of them.
Okay. Um. We've got six members, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Troply?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
What on here do we only need? Just the majority tonight?
Well. You need a...
They're all use variances.
Yeah, so you're gonna need, I'm sure the applicants would like to have a full board. We can discuss it with each applicant as they move forward. And by the way, Mr. Chairman, we still have another resolution to adopt. That's on the calendar. It's under 8B, under Rock Solid.
Oh, yeah. Oh, man. Do you mind? I'm looking. Yeah, do you mind reading that in? I don't have it on my agenda.
Do you want me to read it in?
Yes, if you don't mind, please.
Sure. Resolution for case number BA 20-101, Rock Solid Realty LLC. It's a resolution granting use variance and preliminary major site plan with bulk variances. The eligible voters are Mr. Hughes, Mr. Mertens, Mr. Moretti, Mr. Orozco, Mr. Cantor, and Chairman Nansen.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve.
Mr. Congressman Mertens, do I have a second?
I'll second him, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next case on the agenda. Case number BA 1831, Secudas Realty LLC. Use variance preliminary major site plan. Application of Secuda Realty LLC is applicant owner seeking a use variance approval and preliminary major site plan approval for the expansion of a non-conforming contractor's storage and refuge yard on premises known as Block 183, lots 11301, 115, 11601, 11602, 113, Highway 34. This application was partially heard March 9th, 2020, when it was carried to April 27th, when the meeting for April 27th was canceled due to COVID-19. This application was carried to June 20. After noticing for the June 22nd, 2020 hearing, the application was carried to August 10th, 2020 with no further notice. On August 10th, 2020, after little testimony and update on the status of the application, it was carried to November 23rd, 2020 with new notice for the remote hearing due to COVID-19. After some testimony on November 23rd, 2020, the application was carried to December 14th with no further notice. Expiration date, December 31st, 2020, eligible voters Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Cantor, Gonzalez, and Nansen.
Eileen, before we proceed, we have five members in attendance, I see. Has anyone else certified the record?
Not that they've informed me.
Okay, Mr. Chair, it looks like we have five members only at this point that are eligible to hear the case.
Okay.
So perhaps we could bring in Mr. Vidiallo, and we can discuss that. Eileen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Seiya, have you viewed the minutes of this? Okay.
Good morning, or good afternoon. Let me try it again. Good evening, Michael. Ron Tropoli here. We have five members that are eligible this evening. And while the last thing I'd like to do is adjourn this case, I wanted to bring that to your attention. We do have a way to proceed. We could have you put the balance of your case in and hold the vote and have other voters certify at a later date. But I wanted to bring that to your attention for your review first. You're muted, by the way, sir.
Thank you. For the record, Michael Vidiallo, attorney for the applicant. I appreciate that. So if we did proceed, you're suggesting that we could put the balance of the patient testimony on, answer any remaining questions, but then we would hold the vote for another public hearing where it would just be the vote, I guess?
And that'll give you the benefit of having a full board.
Sure, sure. No, I understand that part. But so we would do the testimony now, and then we would hold it for the vote?
That would be my recommendation. The chair is listening. Mr. Chair, would you agree with that manner in proceeding?
Yes, sir, I sure would.
Yeah, I think that would be the appropriate.
We're pretty much into the case as it is. You know, if I'm not mistaken, there was only two more witnesses, correct?
Yeah, I think, and I think the witness that we did finish was doing most of the testifying. So we have two of the, I would never use the word minor, but we have two of the witnesses that have less to say for this particular application.
Okay. I'm gonna refer back to our professionals. You know, Jennifer Sherry and Charlie, you know, as far as the witness, the testimony that's already on the record, what are y'all's sentiments?
Well, I would think that you're gonna bring your engineer back up because there's been some revisions since we were last together that have to be put onto the record. And then the last two witnesses, I think, as Mr. Vidiallo stated, in my opinion, the traffic and the planning shouldn't be too, too cumbersome, but, I mean, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, and to answer your question about my civil engineer, there were a couple of questions that he was going to jump back up and answer, but we didn't have a lot of direct testimony from him, just on one or two issues.
Okay, I think we can move forward, Mr. Troply, if the applicant is willing to.
I think so, and then we'll hold the vote and take whatever other questions there might be. So with that, Mr. Vidiallo, again, if you would just enter your appearance, and you may proceed.
Yes. Thank you very much for having us back tonight, everyone. You can hear me and see me, okay?
Yes.
Loud and clear.
Great, thank you. So for the record, my name's Michael Vidiallo. I'm an attorney licensed in New Jersey. I'm here for the applicant. You've heard Mr. Chairman mention and identify the applicant and the property. I have with me back here tonight all of our witnesses, and I have representatives from the applicant, of course, that can also testify. When we last appeared before you last month, although it has been a long road, last month was our first official testimony on the application, but we did get a chance to proceed through the bulk of our civil engineer's testimony and many of the issues. So tonight, what I'd like to do, if it pleases the board, is I'd like to start with my traffic expert and to have him testify regarding the traffic issues that have been raised in your report before we go further. I will let you know, in the meantime, a couple of things have happened. I know our restoration plan for our wetlands was approved by the DEP, so we now have the approved restoration plan, which is, again, moving us towards wrapping this up with hopefully approval from all concerned.
Thanks, sir.
If I can, Mr. Moretti is joining the meeting, so before we start.
Mike, I just want to clarify that. That's the restoration for the prior notice of violation, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Correct.
Eileen, before the testimony begins, we now have six members.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Very good. Just for the record.
Mr. Seiya?
We're getting closer.
Would you be able to review these minutes?
Excuse me, everybody. I'm just, since I'm having some difficulty right now.
Okay.
I don't, I have my picture shown, but it don't show on my screen. Is it showing on anybody else's screen?
It's blank.
I'm just having difficulty. I'm sorry for getting to the meeting late. Oh, sorry. I always put my little tab to cover so nobody could see me during the day. I'm sorry about that.
It's okay, sir. Welcome aboard.
All right.
Okay, okay. Mr. Vidiallo?
Yes. So, thank you very much. Mr. Ray, I can see you, and it looks like I can hear you. I assume the rest of the board can?
Yeah, sure.
Think I'm unmuted.
Okay.
You are. Mr. Vidiallo, you need me to bring anybody else in right now, or are we good for now?
Right now, we could proceed with Mr. Ray. If I need anybody else in, I could let you know.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Ray, can you please describe for the board briefly your educational experience and your work experience as a traffic engineer?
Shouldn't I be sworn in first?
Weren't you sworn in first meeting?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
Very good. So, raise your right hand, please. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So how do you like it? And for the record, again, sir, your name?
John Ray REA.
Your witness.
Mr. Ray, you've heard the testimony from our civil engineer regarding how the site currently exists and what the applicant is proposing to do under this application to modify the site, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Vidiallo, can we get his education in professional background?
We're having a tough time with the quality. I'm sorry. Yeah, let's not skip that. Let's not skip. John, can you please discuss your education and your work experience?
I'm a licensed professional engineer. My field of specialty is traffic engineering. I have 45 years' experience in the traffic engineering field, an undergraduate degree in civil engineering from NJIT, and a master's degree in transportation engineering from NYU, and I've appeared before this board on numerous occasions.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for pointing that out. Mr. Ray, you've heard what's proposed to modify the site from its current configuration. You've also heard testimony regarding the existing driveways on the site and how they'll be modified. Can you please describe for the board how we're modifying those driveways and the additional approvals, if any, that'd be required?
Correct. Well, what we're doing is the Route 34 driveway is going to remain in kind as it is in existence today in terms of processing traffic to and from Route 34. And as the board may know, there is an existing driveway to Route 33, which is about 200 feet west of the Route 34 overpass, where Route 34 and Route 33 come together near the Collingswood Flea Market there. And that particular curb cut is going to be closed under the current application, should it be approved, and we will reapply to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for a properly engineered, properly designed driveway at the west end of our property on the Route 33 frontage, a driveway that's designed to NJDOT standards. It will be at a location where site distance is much more acceptable east and west along Route 33 than the current driveway that's pretty much right at the interchange. And so if we are successful in getting the use variance and moving forward with our site plan, we will go to the NJDOT and apply for closing that curb cut and re-engineering the Westerly curb cutter on Route 33 to a design that meets NJDOT standards.
Thank you. And you had studied, is it correct, that you had submitted a report to the board, but as part of that report is detailed, you have studied the traffic levels on the surrounding roads for this proposal?
That is correct. I've done numerous visits to the site to review and take a look at existing traffic conditions. Traffic counts were conducted at the site driveways. They were conducted prior to the COVID pandemic, so we did get reasonable traffic counts. We prepared an initial traffic study dated November 3rd, 2020. And then in response to Mr. Cunliffe's review letter, we prepared a response dated November 30th, 2020, which attempted to address the open traffic items from the review letter.
Yes.
Mike, was that submitted to the board? Because I don't know that I have a copy of that.
It was submitted to the board. It was. Multiple copies. I forget the exact required number of copies were delivered to the board.
Is that what I requested after the last meeting, or was that, hold on, let me just make sure. I want to make sure I did not miss that.
Let me see if I could figure out when it was submitted exactly.
I don't have it.
I'm gonna look. I'll find the date for you.
I don't believe I have it. The last thing I have is November 3rd's report.
November 3rd's? Sorry, I'm trying to check. John, what was your latest?
It's, the response letter was dated November 30th, 2020. If you check your emails, Mike, you should have it right around that date or the day after.
Yeah, looking. I don't have access to all my files right here.
Mr. Chair, what I would say is...
I have a copy of it. I don't have, I'm sorry to interrupt, Charlie. I have a copy of it, I see. I don't... That's all I have with me right now, is a copy of the letter.
Mr. Chair, what I would say is, let's have Mr. Ray continue with his testimony. It's a little bit different now that we have a full voting board. I was gonna say, if this was gonna get carried to another meeting for a vote, you know, we can submit that after the meeting, and if I found anything that I took issue with, we could discuss it then. But let's have Mr. Ray provide testimony. Let's see if it satisfies the concerns that I had raised. And then if they provide that, you know, to the board for the record, should the board vote favorably. If I find anything that, you know, is different from the testimony that's provided, you know, I'll certainly alert the board for that, and, you know, if they need to come back for whatever reason, you know, I'll let the board know that. But let's proceed with it, and let's see where it goes with the testimony.
Charlie, we're not gonna vote it tonight, anyway. We only have six members.
We don't have, we don't have seven on now?
We've got seven board members, but only six are eligible to vote on this.
Oh, okay. All right, well, then I would say, let's have Mr. Ray go and then, you know, provide the report after. If there's anything that needs to come back, and Mr. Ray needs to come back for the next meeting, you know, I'll make sure I contact Mr. Vidiallo, Mr. Tropoli, and Eileen and notify them.
Understood, understood.
Is everybody, is anybody having difficulty with some of the audio? Is it breaking up, or is it just on my end?
I heard it break up just for a second when Mr. Ray was talking, but not just for a second.
Okay, because it did with Mr. Cunliffe. So, okay. You may, Mr. Vidiallo, you can move forward.
Thank you. So, other than obviously the discussion regarding the update to the report, do you have any questions for Mr. Ray? I mean, you've heard Mr. Hopkins also testify. The applicant, you know, when we initially started this process, the applicant really wanted to maintain all three driveways, and the applicant understands that that's simply not possible. So the applicant, you know, has agreed that that third driveway, which is the quote "middle driveway," will be closed as part of this application, and we will have our traffic consultant obtain the necessary permits to design, reconfigure the existing driveway on Route 33.
I do have a question for Mr. Ray. As far as the drive circulation, what is gonna be preventing for people parking in the drive line?
I think we discussed that at the last meeting with Mr. Hopkins. I'm not sure exactly how we resolved that. I thought there was some discussion about signage. We certainly don't want that to happen, and I think that's something we can continue to discuss with the board and its professionals. If I'm not mistaken, and Walt, if you're on, you can correct. I think the drive aisles are gonna be 30 feet wide, if I'm not mistaken, for circulation throughout the site, and they're basically going to connect the Route 34 and the new Route 33 driveway. And all I can tell you, Mr. Nansen, is that we don't want cars or trucks parking anywhere, you know, in the circulation aisles, and we will do whatever is necessary in order to make sure that won't happen. I thought there was a discussion on that at the last meeting.
There was, but we, some of it was left up to your testimony.
Well, we'll certainly have, there's gonna be large sanitation trucks moving through that are gonna prevent people from clogging up those necessary travel ways, but Mr. Hopkins has been brought in, it appears, and he could certainly comment on how we were gonna delineate those areas.
And let me, before Walt gets on, let me just indicate, I think that when Walt designed the site plan, we did provide for some additional parking for, you know, for the people that work there and for visitors, and I think we have adequate parking now, but I'll let Walt take over from there.
You're muted. You're muted, Walt. You're muted.
Sorry. Took the wind right out of my sails.
Now, Walt, you've been previously sworn, and you're still, you're still under oath?
Yes.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Tripoli?
It is. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If I understand the question correctly, it's the concern of mingling of employees, passenger vehicles, and the occasional visitor with the rest of the site. There is parking, as Mr. Ray had indicated, in the front, which I'm sure the board is aware of. That will continue to operate in that way, and there is a gate that separates that area from the rest of the site. So that's really how we'll prevent those commingling. And anybody who's a passenger vehicle visitor or employee would enter and exit on Route 34.
You see, my concern is not necessarily the parking for employees in that. It's back in the back, you know, where you have the concrete pads and the drop pads, to keeping them from easing out into the drive aisles. How are you gonna prevent them from, you know, keep things easing out into, and then finally, they're in the drive?
Well, if I, if it's, if I can share the screen just to make sure, Mr. Chairman, I understand what area of concern you're talking about?
Yep.
So here's the drive aisle. If everybody can see, I'll try to zoom in a little bit. Here's the drive aisle throughout the site. The question, I think, is keeping the area from creeping back out into here and clogging up the drive aisle?
Yes, correct. See where the concrete pads are, the drop pads?
Right. So that's our way of delineating where the trucks should park. Actually preventing them from creeping out into there, you know, I think it just doesn't make sense operationally. I don't know that we would have a physical barrier, though, because that would prevent them ultimately. I don't know that we would have a physical barrier though, because that would prevent them ultimately from pulling out.
Okay. Okay, so they, they're gonna basically back up in there and then dolly down and then pull the tractor out, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, once they drop their trailer, or say they park the truck, how is that gonna work? The trucks actually longer than that? They're not gonna actually park the truck outwards, are they?
Um, say, I'm not a trucker myself, so maybe, maybe you could-
When you got an 18-wheeler, you backed the trailer up there. Those concrete pads are for dollies or is that for the trucks to park on?
It's for, it's for either. We've, we've shown the full truck so that you can see that we can demonstrate the full truck. I don't know, I don't know operationally how often they actually, they actually drop the, the trailers there.
Okay, so this is a full truck. Well, those are just trailers that are on the concrete aisles.
You're right, it's labeled a trailer, but it does have the full length.
Yeah, but you, if you look at the truck entering the drive aisle there, it has a truck out there. If you're gonna drop the trailer, what, what if you don't drop the trailer? Are you gonna leave the truck on the, the pad where it's not intrusive to the drive aisle?
I, I think you're gonna, we may have to, I may have to confer with the client on that. That's kind of an operational issue that I'm just not too familiar with.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry that I can't answer that directly.
That's okay. Okay, you, you understand what I'm saying? The trailer is X amount of feet long. Say 58 or 53 feet. The truck is an additional, what, 219 inches or 230 inches further out?
Okay, let me, let me just confer with the client, operationally how that works. And then let me check my plans to make sure what, what dimensions we actually have on the plan that we're representing.
Okay. I, I just don't wanna see a truck parked in the drive aisle.
Right. I would agree with you and I, nobody, you know, I appreciate your concern and taking a second look at this and helping us with that, but that's certainly not the intention.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, these will be operat-, these will be our primary operational driveways too. So as you know, our equipment, you know, needs that width and that full room to move through there also.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
Well, would it be difficult for the applicant to provide some signage on either side of the driveway incrementally throughout there? Just, you know, circulation or fire lane or something to that effect? So that way it's also apparent?
I think that's a great idea. We, of course, would do it, yes. Sorry, didn't, I didn't answer the question directly, but yes.
Okay. That answers my question.
And, and I know Mr. Ray had, had brought Walt in for that, but we were, we were going through any questions that anybody might have for Mr. Ray?
Correct.
So Mike, if I could just jump in with Mr. Ray. So, John, the, as far as the site driveway, so the applicant's gonna need a lot consolidation permit, obviously. And then are they gonna need, is this triggering access permit with the reconfiguration of the driveways or?
It does. It does, Mr. Cunliffe. And, and assuming that we get the approvals that we need from the township, we will go to the DOT and get a new access permit. I've advised my client that it's in his best interest to get a nice clean permit from the DOT for both the Route 34 and the Route 33 driveways and to hold on to that permit and not lose it.
Okay. And then as far as, so in the, your traffic report, you, you did an assessment of the driveways with level of service during the roadway peak. And I believe both driveways internally operate at a level of service D or, or, or D or E?
Yes, correct.
And so really, how about from the roadway? What are we at? We had a A, a B turning into the site?
The, the Route 34 driveway is a better level of service. The volumes are a little bit lower. I think that they were C or better. The Route 33 driveway for the afternoon peak hour, I believe we had a D or an E level of service. And that's in spite of the fact that we have relatively low traffic volumes entering and exiting the property. However, Mr. Cunliffe, what I did do was, at the last meeting, you had advised me that there was a traffic study done for another application. And I believe it was right across Route 33. It was the 1294 Equities LLC application. I did get a copy of the traffic study that was done by Dynamic Traffic for that application. And in reviewing that traffic study, I found that they had actually done a gap study on Route 33 and determined that there were adequate gaps for their traffic, you know, onto and off Route 33. And in reviewing the traffic that was being generated by that project compared to what we're generating, it was very similar. So in the response letter, which I believe you don't have, one of the things I noted was that the gap study that Dynamic performed showed that there were multiple inadequate gaps in the traffic flow for the amount of traffic that we generate, certainly, to get onto and off Route 33 in a safe and efficient manner.
And correct me if I'm mistaken, that the level of service D that you said and the C, that's exiting the site, right? I believe during the peak hour. So any queue or anything is gonna be impacting the applicant or internal to the site, right?
It's gonna be on the site, correct. It'll be on the site itself, correct.
Okay. Now, that was an analysis during the roadway peak. Now, how about, what exactly does the site driveway peak in, in reference to the roadway?
Right. I, I did take a look at our tra-, our raw traffic count data, and it appears as though the peak traffic volumes entering and exiting the site actually do so before the morning peak roadway hour and before the afternoon peak roadway hour. So in essence, what I've concluded is that even though our peak does not coincide with the roadway peak, it's actually a good thing because the traffic volumes, for example, you know, on Route 33 and Route 34 are a little bit lower between 6:00 and 7:00 AM when our activity is a little bit higher. So it's actually a good thing that our peak does not coincide with the roadway peak.
So, so I know, you know, during the roadway peak, it was like, you know, this is all ten, maybe five or six trips or something per hour coming out of there for the different driveways. I mean, for, for the site peak, are we talking about that same amount of trips coming out of the site? Is it 20? Is it 80?
No, it's certainly not 80. I have to double check the traffic count there. But it looks to me, a few vehicles more, but it's not significant. Still very low.
Okay. So I, I guess is the representation that the, there is a negligible difference from the site driveway peak as opposed to the, the roadway peak as far as level of service for the site driveway and then also entering the site and exiting the site?
Yes. And, and, and in my opinion, because the traffic volumes on Route 33 and Route 34 are lower during the site peak hour, the levels of service would actually be a little bit better, probably. Not probably, for sure.
And this is, for all intensive purposes, a site that has, albeit without land use approval, has been functioning for a number of years? Are you aware of any issues or impact to the adjacent roadways during that time?
Not with respect to the capacity of those roadways. We did contact the police department and ask about, you know, accident data. And I did get a response from the police that, you know, the interchange area in and of itself is an issue with respect to accidents. We understand that. And that was why I recommended to my client that that middle driveway on Route 33 be closed. And we construct the proper, safe driveway on the western edge of the property to Route 33 that meets the current standards, has better site distance. It's, it's essentially better for everyone.
And last follow-up question, and this is kind of also, you know, an operational question for the applicant. I think the traffic impact analysis talked about proposed hour of operations from 2:00 AM to 8:00 PM at night. Are we expecting, you know, significant amount of vehicles coming in at 2:00 AM in the morning? Or is that employees coming into the site on Route 34 adjacent to commercial properties to get to the site to, you know, get in the vehicles and get ready to, to leave the site? When do they approximately anticipate to leave the site? You know, when, are, are we seeing a mass, you know, exodus of trucks going out to go pick up, you know, trash from the adjacent municipalities, you know, from 5:00 to 6:00 AM, you know, 4:00 to 5:00 AM? You know, when does that occur?
Since our traffic count started at 6:00 AM, I, I really can't comment on anything that happens prior to 6:00 AM. So probably somebody from the operations side would have to answer that question. I suspect it's not very heavy activity, but since our count started at 6:00 AM, I, I can't answer that question.
Yeah. And Charlie, the, the one part of the business that does get there earlier is the part of the transportation business for municipal pickup that has to get out in front of the school buses. I'm sure you're all familiar with getting stuck behind the school buses. So the early shift are those drivers that come in for the school and get out for the municipal pickups. And then it's much later where the balance of the team comes in overtime and brings out the other vehicles. And as you know, I think you've heard testimony already, these containers never come back to the site full. And, and very often, the containers never come back to the site. So the client works very hard when a container is done being used at Site A to not really go out and move it and dump it until they have a Site B to bring the container to. So very often, these, these vehicles go out without containers and come back in the evening without containers. But again, that's after the early morning traffic for school buses.
I guess I just wanna get a little bit more of a, like a, a time range on when, you know, we're saying the municipal pickup. Are we talking from 5:00 to 6:00 AM? Are we talking 4:00 to 5:00, 2:00 to 3:00 in the morning? I just wanna clarify it for the board's consideration. I know this is an operation that's existed. I just, you know, wanna get a little bit more detail on that.
No, I understand. And I'll be able to get you that in a minute. And I could put on, I could put on another witness also, or Walt may have that information. But I'll, I'll get you exactly what the, the rough timing is of, of when they pull out for, for that in a second.
So, and then kinda to touch on, you know, another somewhat related item, Mr. Chair, they, they are asking for a relief of lighting in the back majority of the area for the circulation aisles and these dolly pad parking areas. What I would say is, I wouldn't take an exception to granting relief of the lighting, especially given the proposed hours of operation being in early in the morning. You know, I don't know that the, especially since there's some date adjacent residential properties, having this site fully illuminated that early in the morning would be something that adjacent residential properties would wanna see. What I would say is if there is going to be vehicle traffic coming in and out of the site or circulating internal to the site early in the morning, Ms. Bean brought up at the last meeting, a, a proposed fence along the Route 33 with screening. I think that would something that would definitely go a long way and hopefully mitigating any impact early in the morning to the adjacent properties, especially the residential properties.
Can you comment again about, what were you saying would mitigate the impact?
So I, I believe at the last meeting, Ms. Bean brought up the fencing along Route 33. Right now, it's all chain length. She wanted to see, and I think some of the board members also said they wanted to see like an eight-foot fence with actuals, whether it's a windscreen or like a vinyl fence in lieu of something open that light can freely pass through. I think that would go a long way in, you know, preventing light from vehicles, you know, moving internally to the site, coming out onto Route 33 and affecting adjacent properties.
I'll have to ask Walt to come back in and talk about that. I know he's, he's looked at that issue with the clients and to speak to it.
Yeah, so as, as far as the lighting, yes, Mr. Cunliffe and I did speak about this between the meetings. And we would suggest that what's currently there is, is, is functional and no need to add additional lighting to the, to the area. With regard to the perimeter, we did discuss that with our client. I know that the chain length fence is, is not something that the board would like to see. But it is a great expense to put another fence up. So we, we would suggest and request from the board that the chain length fence be removed in its entirety. I think that would bring the, the site more into compliance with your ordinance. However, adding an eight-foot fence seems to be an excessive expense, especially since we're adding landscaping along the, the, the perimeter of the site, some of it on top of berms. And most of that landscaping would be installed at heights greater than eight feet and certainly would grow to higher than eight feet.
You know, Mr. Chair, I would defer to, to Ms. Bean and also Ms. Spiro regarding like the, you know, I know the, the ordinance requires a 50-foot buffer. I don't know that the full 50-foot is being provided along the entire frontage as far as plantings and birmingham. You know, from my perspective, with, with lighting, you know, coming in and out of the site, you know, certainly a fence, I think, is gonna stop light from coming out of there. But ultimately, it's, you know, it's the board's determination on that and consideration for it.
Well, with all due respect, an eight-foot fence is, is certainly well below any mounting height of the lights. So I, I would disagree with that, that a fence would, would prevent the lighting.
It would, it would mitigate vehicle lights.
Vehicle.
Traveling. I, I think that's what Charlie's referring to, right? I mean, well, I know you and I spoke about the fact that your intention was to remove the fence entirely and then just have the berm and the landscaping that I'm gonna point to Shari in a second. But it appears that, you know, Charlie has brought up some points about potential off-site impacts that a fence probably would eliminate. So is there a possibility that you would reconsider your position on placing like an eight-foot solid fence along that frontage behind the berm or behind whatever landscaping Shari wants to see?
It's, it's, my, my position from an engineer is that it, it's, it's not, it's not gonna provide much of a benefit. And ultimately, this decision is up to my client. So I would just say that we can, if possible, we can continue with the testimony and I'll confer with my client.
Okay. Is that okay with you, Charlie?
Yep, that's fine.
I'd also point out, as you all know, there's, there's several areas of the site where there's a significant grade change. So headlights aren't really gonna escape the perimeter on those areas. The berm and the plantings are gonna do that as well. And in some areas where there may be less than that, there's no receptors on the other side of the road that we would be shielding from, just other parts of the intersection.
Are, are we really gonna argue about a fence? I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the direction this is gonna go. I mean, we've come so far, it appears that, that Charlie would like to see a fence to try to mitigate, you know, some, some off-site impacts associated with lighting. And now we're gonna like get into grading. And I mean, can't you just give us the fence, honestly? And save us all like an hour of arguing?
Walt is, is, I think, both speaking to the client. So I'll certainly, I'll let you know.
All right. So how about we move on, put a pin in that for now, and then revisit it when he gets conference, you know, from his client and your client. And then, you know, go back to Mr. Ray and then move forward with whoever else you have to put on.
Yes, understood, understood. Makes sense.
Is there any other questions of Mr. Ray? Board members?
Mr. Danson, I have a question. In the event that the driveway on Route 33, the new proposed one doesn't get approved, will we be voting yes or no before the approval on that driveway? Or do they have to come back when it gets approved or it doesn't get approved?
Mr. O'Donnell, I can only, you know, from a traffic engineer's perspective, I can't see why the DOT would, would not approve that location when it's a much safer location than that middle driveway. But probably that's more of a question for Mr. Vidiello as far as timing of how and when this all happens.
Yeah. So we would certainly offer, as a condition of any approval this board chose to grant, that we would seek that approval. And as Mr. Ray suggests, we, we believe it's something that would definitely issue and it would issue post-board approval if this board approved the application. However, if we were in a situation where we realize, just like any of the conditions of your approval, if we're in a situation later on, we realize we absolutely can't comply, we would have to come back- we would have to come back to this board and reappear and explain it to the board and try to find out what the board is going to need or how we would address that in an amended approval from this board.
Okay, that's what I really wanted to know. Thank you.
To answer your question. Did that answer your question, Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, it does. Mr. Nansen, I just thought of one final question. When the driveway gets approved on the west side of Route 33, does the applicant plan, can someone tell me if they're going to be making a left-hand turn out of that driveway?
Yes, it would be yes, Mr. O'Donnell. It would be a full movement driveway.
Because between four o'clock and six o'clock, there's an awful lot of traffic going both ways. Maybe if you had a sign put up that says slow caution hidden driveway, just say come around that turn pretty fast.
Yeah, the problem with that sign, Mr. O'Donnell, is the hidden driveway sign is for a driveway that's basically hidden because the curvature of the road hides it and Route 33 is pretty level and straight there. What we can do is maybe petition the DOT for an intersection ahead driveway. That might be something we could do, but it wouldn't be a hidden driveway sign because the roadway is fairly level and straight there. I understand your concern. We'll see what we can do with some signage.
I understand what you're saying, but when they're coming around that turn at 50 miles, 60 miles an hour, you don't see any driveway because the driveway, you don't see it. And when they pull, when a truck pulls out to make a left-hand turn, that's where you're going to have a lot of accidents. So you really need to get it right.
You, we, and we will, and I think you may be talking about the existing driveway location, which I agree with you 100% is in a bad spot with respect to site distance. That's going to be moved further to, that's going to be closed and the new driveway is going to, is going to be several hundred feet further to the west.
I agree with you 100% on that driveway, but only 50% on the other driveway, the new.
Gotcha.
Mr. Sayah?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Mark?
Yeah, kind of following up with Tom, which is said, the 34 entrance, trucks cannot make a left onto that because of how 34 divides off, I believe, where you have the overpass. Is that correct?
They wouldn't be able to. No, the Route 34 driveway is a full movement driveway as well, too. However, a lot of the trucks don't use the Route 34 driveway. Our counts show that, you know, the majority of the trucks are using Route 33.
Yeah, because from what I can see, it seems more practical that they would use 33, especially if you're moving it further west, which I do agree, I think it's a better spot. I understand Mr. O'Donnell's point. It is still going to be, you know, dangerous, but I, I don't want, really want to see the trucks going down 33 west and making U-turns. So I guess that would be the best place to put it. But that answers my question. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes?
No questions at this time, sir.
Mr. Moretti?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Troply, we, we're open to public for questions, right? Each witness?
Yeah, I believe we were doing it after each witness, correct, Mr. Vidiello?
Yes, I believe so. We were.
Fine, Mr. Chair. Questions only.
At this time, I'll take a motion to open the public for questions only of Mr. Ray.
I'll make a motion to open the public, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Hughes?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Eileen, at this time, we'll open for questions only of Mr. Ray.
For members of the public that are on the meeting, the chairman has opened the hearing up for questions of Mr. Ray only. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. You'll be brought into the hearing. You'll need to give your name, address, and be, I don't know if you need to be sworn, but.
Yeah, sworn in.
You do need to be sworn in and you will go from there. And I do have someone here.
Here we go, my mic on now.
We can hear you, sir. Would you raise your right hand and take a note, you sort of the truth, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
And maybe have your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Guy Vastola, V-A-S-T-O-L-A, and my address is 1299 Highway 33, City Lights Recording Studio.
Thank you very much. And next are questions for Mr. Ray, the traffic engineer, please.
Okay, um, so structurally, this driveway boards my property and I, I need to pay attention here because this could change the whole dynamic of my business. The magic time is 4:30 to 5:30 AM and 4:30 to 5:30 PM. That's where the, 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 let's say the trucks start, they come in in the morning and they leave at that time, they start revving up the engines, quarter to five, 5:00 AM in the morning, for six o'clock, everybody leaving. And so that's the magic hour there. And then I'm very concerned because this driveway borders my property, which is a recording studio. And you, the planning board, helped me put this studio on the cover of worldwide magazines. It was, it was designed from the ground up to be a studio. And of course, with the help of all of, all of you, the board, the planning board of Howell Township, I built the facility. We built the facility because mainly the noise was the highway. And so the, we focused very much on the sound of how we would protect our recordings from the sound of the highway.
Mr. Vastola, not to, and I appreciate what you're saying, but can you put your commentary in the form of a question for Mr. Ray? Because you've expressed a lot of concepts that I'm sure Mr. Ray can probably address from his perspective as a traffic engineer. If you could just, and again, just kind of refocus it, you'll have an opportunity to give commentary at the end, but.
Okay.
Just for now, focus on that.
My question is, would, would sound be an issue for me? I've been there 30, 32 years now in this location, and I've never had to worry about the sounds of, of the outside until recently. And until, look, it was, it was, it wasn't a commercial facility. It was, there was a house there at one time. So we didn't build for that. I just want to know, sonically, is there anything that I would have to worry about? I mean, we need to design this driveway in, in a way that, that, of course, there would be smooth because any, every truck that would roll over it, I'd get that ramification in my recordings, too. So I, I really am just concerned about the whole design of this. And I'm sure the Secudas family, they're great neighbors and good people. I'm, I'm sure they, they understand my concern. But I would like to, to see exactly what this is going to be. And if any way I could, I could help, I would be more than happy to because it's right there in my yard.
Yeah, in order to respond to that, Mr. Vastola, I'm not a sound engineer. I'm not a sound expert. I know there are state sound statutes that need to be adhered to by the applicant, and I think it varies by time of day, and they would have to adhere to those state standards. The reason why the driveway is being moved there is basically just for traffic safety purposes. And it, it needs to be where, where it is for safety purposes. But I, I understand, and, and maybe someone else can answer that question, but I'm not a sound expert.
Can I ask a question? Do you live in that building next to the site or is it just your, your sound?
No, no, this is, they're, both buildings are studios, yes.
So my understanding.
I don't, I don't live here, no.
So my understanding of the sound, the, the New Jersey sound requirements is that typically it's measured at the property line of a sensitive receptor, which would not be another commercial operation. So normally it would be 65 decibels at the property line during the day, and then it drops down to 50 at night. But because this is a business, I don't think that would be, that would constitute a sensitive receptor. We wouldn't hit that threshold until you got to the property line a little farther to the west where the toll project is or, or if there's residential across the street. So I think it's a legitimate question, and I think that, you know, it's definitely something that somebody should be able to address, but the state noise statute's not going to help in this instance.
Okay, thank you.
I can briefly, I'd like to just briefly point out a couple of changes we're making. We are going to resurface the driveways and are going to construct pads that allow the vehicles to remove tracking debris. So any sort of potholes in the dirt that exist on our site right before those driveways, we maintain them anyway, but now there'll be a more substantial tracking pad there. You talked about a smooth surface, so certainly the surface is not going to become more difficult or bumpy for them to travel. If anything, it's going to be better maintained. Also, there's a significant operation that was on the site after that tree clearing that was all adjacent to your property, next to your property. Large dump trucks were there. They were staged there, moved in and out. That whole portion of the operation is now moving much further away from your facility and a new detention basin is going in to push our real onsite operations further from your facility. The driveway access point is basically staying where it is now. It's just being redesigned in terms of curve and radii and stuff like that. But a big part of the operations that was much closer to your building will now be pushed away and separated by a base.
Okay, great. And, and, and of course, the water issue, the faster we get to the basin, it would be great for all of us here, is all I could say. Because, because since those trees aren't drinking that water, it flows through my, both of my buildings. And I'm trying to be a good neighbor because I like the Secudas family. But I, I'd really like to see this get done sooner than later so we could all be, you know, more positive. I mean, I, I'd really like to see this happen soon because it's starting to make it that I can't flush a toilet some days. And, and the water table, it's really changed the, the water level around here since those trees are gone, regardless how they're gone. That's one thing, one, I mean, it doesn't matter. We, we need to just focus on getting the, getting us right here because since those, those trees are gone, it's kind of made a little bit of an issue for me here with the water and the way it flows here off of that property. And now there's another mountain out there with, of the, whatever they're going to be using in, in the back that, that is catching water and I'm sure going to make the, the property even higher there. This all has to be graded in such a way that it goes to those ponds, so it catches the water. I'm very concerned about that.
Right. And then Mr. Vastola, again, we appreciate your comments. Do you have any other questions of Mr. Ray that relate to traffic at this point?
No, I don't.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You, you will have an opportunity to voice your comments. The questions as far as the stormwater should really go towards the, Mr. Hopkins, I believe it is, the engineer, or our board, our board engineer also, you know, probably better suited to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Before we continue, I just want to mention that Mr. Orozco has joined the meeting.
Okay, thank you. At this time, though, we, we still will not vote this case tonight. Because Jose is going to have to go. Right, to certify. Okay, is there someone else in the public wishing to ask questions of Mr. Ray at this time?
Give me a second. Are there any other members of the public wishing to ask questions of Mr. Ray? Please raise your hand. I don't see any other members. I believe they're all applicants or professionals.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion to close public.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public.
Okay, motion by Mr. Sayah? Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. I happened to search for you. Mr. Vettelli?
Oh, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you. I al, I also wanted to get back on a question the board had. So there was a question about how many trucks leave earlier in the morning? And between maybe 4:00 AM and 5:00 AM, there's approximately five trucks that'll be doing the, do the early morning departures. So that's the total for that type of traffic on an average day. But if there's no other questions from Mr. Ray, we have not yet heard from our professional planner. Ms. Cofone is also here tonight and prepared to testify. I don't believe she's been sworn. I'm not sure if she's been admitted into the meeting yet.
I just put her in.
Thank you.
Christine, hi, will swear your witness? Swear the testimony you give this evening, wherever you are there, or there you are. It will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self, you God.
Yes.
Yes, state your name for the record, please.
It's Christine A. Nazaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofone, C-O-F-E-S-T-N-Frank, O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701.
Okay, you're a witness, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Cofone, I know you've appeared before this board many times, but can you briefly, for the record, describe your education and work experience as a professional planner?
Yes. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, it's Christine Nazaro-Cofone. I've been testifying as a professional planner for about 25 years in the state of New Jersey. I've been qualified before the Howell zoning board and in excess of over 400 planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey. Likewise, I'm an Affordable Housing Special Master. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. I'm also a planner for the Casino Redevelopment Authority and a few other locations. But by and large, the bulk of my practice is appearing before planning and zoning boards on, on applications such as this, and my license is current and valid.
We accept your credentials, Ms. Cofone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cofone. Ms. Cofone, I'll, I'll keep it short and simple. You've heard the testimony tonight and you've read the written reports. Is that correct?
Yes, I have heard all the testimony. I reviewed the application submission documents. I have participated in the, the meetings that we've had, getting us to the point where we'd have this application ready to go. I visited the subject property several times with you as well as other members of the team. So it's been a long process to get here tonight. And I can, I've also reviewed the resolution of approval from the prior board actions on this property, most recently the one from 2007, which really informs the particular suitability of this application. As the board knows, this is for a non-conforming use in the HD3 zone, and we're here seeking a use variance as we intend to expand or can just continue the operations of that non-conforming use in the HD3 zone. So that leaves us with a burden of proof to demonstrate to this board that the site is particularly suitable for the proposed use and that special reasons exist for the grant of the variance and that the board can grant the variance with no substantial detriment. So as far as the particular suitability, when reviewing the prior application's approved, resolution of approval, finding number seven in that resolution was very interesting to me because it, the way that read was, given the characteristics of the surrounding properties, it appears that the only reasonable use that this property can be put to is an outdoor storage facility. The board notes that there are many non-conformities which surround this particular location, which include contractors' yards, and notes the proximity of this location to the SED2 zone, which permits this type of use. And I think the board can continue to look at that description of both the subject property as well as the subject property and what surrounds it. I think the board can also look at the fact that we have direct access to Route 33 as runs during the site is particularly suitable for the proposed use and the continued expansion of it. When you're, and this is not an expansion. When you're, and this is not an expansion of a non-conforming use. I agree that we do need the D1, but when you're doing the case for an expansion of a non-conforming use, which I would sort of liken this to, one of the things that the law encourages you to do is to introduce things onto the property that make it more harmonious or a more efficient site or a better attractive site. There have to be some betterments to the site. And I think when you're looking at the negative criteria in this application, there are quite a few betterments that I think have already been testified to. When you looked at Mr. Hopkins' plans, if you had an opportunity to visit the subject property, and I'm sure you all drive past it or that you visited it in conjunction with preparing for this case, you notice there's really a lack of any formal landscaping or buffering. And certainly if this application is going to be approved, and I hope that it will, much like our neighbor does, I think will really leave the site much better visually from a landscaping point of view. In addition, we are introducing new, more stormwater management. We are also improving the access to make the driveways more compliant with the DOT regulations. So when you look at those, those betterments and you look at what's existing on the property, I think the board can certainly conclude that there will be no substantial detriments. And the board, in my opinion, can rely on several purposes of the municipal land use law for the grant of the variance relief. I think the board can rely on criteria G of the land use law, which talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. I think the board can rely on criteria M, which talks about an efficient use of the land. This is already an existing commercial property that's situated near similar type uses as the original resolution governing this property recognized. I think the board can rely on criteria I, a desirable visual environment, particularly in light of the fact of the substantial landscaping that we're proposing. And criteria H promoting the free flow of traffic, given the fact that we are making the, if the application were to be approved, we would make the driveway DOT compliant. So those are the purposes of the land use law. In order to substantiate our burden of proof, we only have to demonstrate one. But I believe that those four can be advanced. And when you talk about the particular suitability, I think it's also important that the board consider, Howell looked at its master plan in 2019, and there was something very interesting in that master plan that I thought was very relevant to this application. On page four of your 2019 master plan, there's a statement in there that indicates trade contractor businesses as defined above should be permitted as a conditional use in the HD2, HD3, SED, and SED light districts. And then it goes up to define a trade contractor business to be defined, to be defined as a facility primarily used for the storage of materials, equipment, and vehicles associated with the business of a trade contractor, such as a plumber, electrician, carpenter, mason, or other similar building and construction-related contractors, craftsmen, or tradesmen. Such facilities may include accessory office space. And I think when you look at the fact that master plan was adopted in 2019, I think it was adopted in November of 2019, so just about, you know, a little bit over a year ago. I think that this is exactly the type of use that the master, the governing body, or the master plan, I'm sorry, calls for in this location. In addition to that, there was a goal and objective in that master plan that talked about encouraging business and industries to locate along the township's highway corridors. And I think this, this application would be consistent with that. So I think what you have before you is you have an application for a site that has long been used for this type of use, but an opportunity to have the application before you for what I consider are really a lot of site betterments. Again, you know, when you, when you group the betterments together, the really important ones, I think, relate to the landscaping, the buffering, the stormwater management, and the access. Those are really the things that informed my decision as a planner on the negative criteria. We've also had a lot of testimony tonight and a lot of discussion about the fence. I, I thought we had a better solution with our fence to, to remove it from the application. I think really aesthetically from the street in this area, the combination of birmingham and landscaping that we are proposing, I think would be more impactful and would make the site look better from the street and from the adjoining roadway network rather than having a fencing up there. And I don't think, the properties that surround this, the fencing's not going to do anything to deal with the lighting. So I think you have to think about aesthetics and how we best make this site have a filtered view. The important is to have the surrounding properties as well as the motoring public have a filtered view of the subject property to provide for adequate screening. That's why as planners, we write landscaping and, and buffering standards is because we want to obscure. You're not going to obliterate the view altogether, but the goal is to have a filtered view. And I think that we accomplished that the best with our landscaping plan that we've proposed. So taken together, I think we substantiate our burden of proof for the grant of the variance. The bulk variances associated with this application essentially relate to existing conditions. Mr. Hopkins outlines all the variances in the conclusion of his testimony. Last month, he indicated that there was a front yard setback variance, which is an existing non-conformity for the masonry building, and the same thing with the parking. We have worked really hard after repeated floggings by your professional staff to get out all of the items out of the structure, the structures out of the buffer. I knew it took us a long time to get that message, but I'm happy to report that we finally did and we got everything out of the buffer, all the stormwater management. I think we, you know, really made great strides in this plan to try to, to bring to the board and the township a plan that really substantiates its burden of proof and does satisfy both prongs of the negative criteria. And you have a master plan, really, that is really looking to what I would consider make this a permitted use. So that, that sums up my testimony, Mr. Vennello, if there's anything else.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Cofone, just, just in summary, I know you touched upon this. So, so in your opinion, the applicant has met the burden under the MLUL for the relief requested, is that, is that accurate?
Yes, we meet all the statutory proofs. I talked about particular suitability, positive and negative criteria, the Medici Enhanced Reconciliation with a new master plan that recommends very similar type uses that this use would be in line with. I think we substantiate every prong of the burden of proof.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I have no more direct from Ms. Cofone unless the board has questions or the public.
Ms. Bean?
So I agree with Ms. Cofone that this has been a long time taking us to get to this point. I appreciate the fact that now, with the exception of the one permanent structure along 34, we've removed everything from the perimeter buffer, which was not the case leading into this application. They've removed the stormwater management basin from the 50-foot buffer as well. They're going to remove what I consider that ugly same lane fence along 34. I'm going to defer to the board on whether they want to see the fence or not. But before we get to that point, I would just ask Shari, they're birmingham along 33, correct?
Yes, there's birmingham there.
And how high is the berm? I don't remember off the top of my head.
It's three foot high, 15 feet wide with trees on it.
So, you know, I think that's, you know, I'm going to defer to you with respect to the species and whether or not you feel that it's, you know, dense enough or what have you. But I do think just cleaning that up, removing that really questionable driveway, like right along that curve, moving it farther to the west. So I do think that there are a lot of, you know, benefits now. You know, like I said, it took a while to get to this point. I do think, and I'm, you know, it's something that's going to have to get worked out between Mr. Hopkins and Charlie with respect to how to address the concerns, the impact that this neighbor is now feeling. But, you know, all that being said, I do feel that the proposal as we see it, the concept that Walt had up on the screen earlier, you know, is a much better scenario for the site than what has been there for a while. And so I take no exception to the testimony that has been provided.
Thank you, Jennifer. Charlie?
So the only comment I have going back to fences, it was a suggestion on my end. Like I said, the hours of operation are kind of outside a normal commercial. You know, the traffic report said as early as 2:00 AM. Certainly a fence that's solid is going to let less light. You know, if Shari's satisfied with the plantings and the height of the buffer along the frontage there, you know, I would take no exception to it. Just touching back to Mr. Vasola's comments, and I believe that the township engineer, our engineering department may have already been in correspondence with him regarding his septic. I know, as the applicant's aware, sanitary sewer is available along Route 33 now. If there's an issue with the septic system, it's always an option to connect into the public sewer on Route 33. And then also going to his comment about, you know, he wants to see the basin put in as quickly as possible. You know, I think it's something just for the board to discuss whether or not, you know, we want to put some time to act on the applicant to kind of make sure that this moves along, you know, not quickly, but you know, it's not lingering out there. It's a little bit different that this was a, you know, code enforcement case other, as opposed to just something that came in for a site plan approval. I think it's benefit for the applicant and the adjoining properties that we see this, you know, move along as quickly as possible. As Mr. Vestola said, obviously that's contingent on the outside agency approvals, but just something for the board to, to consider before we, before we wrap it up tonight and before we get to a vote.
Hey, I just have a question. Down on the Route 33 area, I'm, I'm looking at, oh, what plan is this? Five of nine, I believe it is. It's a landscape plan? It says, field locate 25 hollies in the woods. Okay. Is this existing woods there? And if so, what's the elevation there? You know, how high is that? You see what I'm talking about, Shari?
It does go lower. I'm not on the right sheet to see where the road is.
Walter, maybe you can ask that question?
I'm sorry, yes, I, I didn't want to, with the Zoom, I didn't know. But if it's, if it would be, we do show some grades there. I think when the plan, it actually shows in that wooded area that the site is slightly lower. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can pull up the screen to make sure that we're all talking about the same area.
Yes, please do.
So I believe you said you're on page five, correct?
Yes. If you can go down to 33. Can you move the page up?
So in this area, I think is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Down lower.
Over here?
No, down lower, at the very bottom of your page. Can you lift that up?
That's as far up as I can go, Mr. Chairman. I think there might be a little lag issue there, Walt. Okay.
Yeah, I see.
Zoom it out?
Is this what you want to see?
Yeah, there you go. This, this bottom section down at the bottom there, it, it looks like a bowtie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's the elevation within that?
It is showing it dropping off a little bit so that the site is, is a little bit lower. I've been by the site, obviously, many times. It doesn't appear to be that much flatter. But, you know, there, there is some existing woods there. And Ms. Shapiro's suggestion here was certainly not to clear that area out to preserve it and then, you know, add additional landscaping to supplement it, to kind of beef it up.
Well, see, that, that would be my concern as far as headlights, you know, from the trucks coming down that, that access road or that circulation aisle coming towards 33. If we could beef that up, you know, where headlights can't shine out from there, that's basically what we're, we're talking about a fence is to block those headlights on the internal aisle.
But, but I, I understand that with all due respect, I just called up the, the area of the site, you know. This is a, this is a commercial area where I don't, I don't, I'm really failing to see what the, the concern with the adjacent properties would be.
Okay, that, that's that existing tree lines right in there.
Yeah.
Yes, this is the existing tree line, but we, we would be, we're concerned about headlights going onto adjacent commercial properties.
Right, JB's Diner. But if you look, if you look right to the, oh, I guess, the way I'm looking at it to the left, that's a residential house right there. Behind JB's Diner there.
Over here?
To the left, down.
This right here?
That's JB's Diner. If you go down and to the left.
This right here?
I think, I think you are circling the right thing down Tyse Road, which is behind. There's like two or three houses back there. That's what you're referring to?
Yes. You have residential there. That's, as, as long as we can block those headlights coming down that access road, that, that would make me happy.
I can certainly, you know, again, we're not going to, here, so we're not going to get to a vote tonight. But we can discuss with the client, maybe a limited fence in this area. Is that maybe what I'm hearing? It certainly wouldn't make sense along 34 and even along here.
I think he's suggesting that perhaps some increased birmingham and supplemental planting to, to mitigate potential light spillage across 33.
Okay, birmingham wouldn't, is something that we might not be able to do. We can look at it on the grading plan because we certainly wouldn't want to take these trees down, but see if we can put something maybe behind it. I don't know if we have the room, but we try.
Shari, how many deciduous trees are in there? How many four-season trees? How many deciduous trees?
That they're planting or that's existing?
No, that's existing there.
It's really all deciduous trees. There might have been some smaller hollies. There's actually some smaller evergreen, like understory in there. But yeah, it's open. And the reason why there's nothing really behind it, we just have hollies scattered through. When we did the site walk out there, you, well, you see on this aerial how close all this equipment is to the trees. So it looks like on the plans, that's all going to be plenty away from the trees. So it does look like there's room to add there.
Okay, yeah, that, that's my concern is because if it's deciduous in the wintertime, it's going to be empty. You know, the, the leaves are going to come down. It's going to be very, you know, wintery gray through there. So if we have something that could block those lights from that driveway, you know, you said it, if, if it even means putting up a sparse fence across there to block that, that's, that's good. But I'd rather see a four-season buffer, you know, in there, you know, plantings in there. Yeah, see, that's kind of thin there.
Right, that's why we're going to have the hollies spotted in, you know, just because not, not much is going to grow within the wooded, you know, the wood line there.
Oh, I understand. But if there's something behind that that we can do to, to help shield headlights, I'm not talking about sight lighting, I'm just talking about the trucks coming in and out at 4:00 in the morning, you know, and their lights shining across there. Or if they're picking up a dumpster in there in the morning, they're sitting there for a few minutes loading the dumpster, that light shining straight out across here. That, that's all I'm talking about. Do you all have any objection to working with Ms. Shapiro on that?
No, not at all.
No, Mr. Chairman, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, any other question from my board members? Can we get the board back up?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Can you put that previous photograph up where it shows the opening where the driveway is?
The aerial, Mr. O'Donnell, the aerial?
Yes, yes, the aerial. Go back to where all the cars are, the trucks.
You want to go further?
Keep going. You had the picture before. I want to go further up.
Towards 34 or towards Freehold Borough?
Towards 34. I want to see Route 34. Towards 34. I want to see Route 34 and Route 33 from the air.
Yeah, it's the other, the other drawing you had a part showing JB's Diner and all.
Okay.
Yeah, right there. Maybe you can move it down a little bit. Yeah, that's good. So what what I'm addressing is from where all the trees are on Route 34 and they come onto Route 33, that whole gap. First of all, I'd like to know what the buffer is there.
So this one we're
where the berm is going to be. I mean, how much of a buffer has to be there before the, when the berm goes in? Why does the berm have to be 50 feet wide? Why can't it be higher? Like six feet high and have
It's 15 feet wide, not 50.
Oh, 15. I thought I heard 50.
Yeah.
Okay, so why can't it be five or six feet high? And then have like four foot pine trees. So it's just as big as a fence. Because how are you going to close that area up with little trees that are going to take years to grow?
So, Mr. O'Donnell, is that, I'm I'm happy to answer that. I don't know if that's directed to me or your professionals. I'd be more than happy to address it if you'd like me to.
Yes, I would.
So I, so just, just to be clear, so along 34, there'll be no changes to what's there now, so
That's fine.
We're we're going to try to supplement a little bit, but you do have this this area, and I'm sure you know that there's a substantial grade differential.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. I have a problem with the opening, the big opening.
So this is along here where where there is the driveway that we're closing up, and you can see it's very sparse here.
Right.
This is where the berm would go and the landscaping. I just, you know, again, I I I understand your concern with light spillage, but, you know, JB's is all the way over here. You know, I don't know what we, this Tyse's Road is over here, so I don't know that any light spillage or, you know. What are we protecting it from? Other parts of 33?
I'm more concerned that nobody sees in it like that. There used to be a forest here where you never knew that place was there. I was there for years and never knew there was a place there, and it just slowly got eaten all up and all the trees vanished. So I'd like to see it back to where you can't see in the place. I mean, you could do it with an eight foot fence. You could do it with a five foot berm and four foot trees, and then nobody knows it's in there. Because for years, nobody knew it was in there. I used to own the property right across the street. And I never knew there was a trucking outfit in there for years. And then all of a sudden, all the trees disappear, and now you can see everything.
Okay, so so I understand your concern. It's more of an aesthetic concern and and certainly we can, I can look into adding a foot or two of height on the on the berm if if that's agreeable to your professionals. And then possibly lowering the the proposed planting height as planted. Certainly, they would grow higher, but the installed height would be the same, if not higher.
Well, I'd like to see them start higher and and not that they grow, you know, really, really high, but you know, I mean, how high can they grow? Eight or nine, 10 feet?
Well, they, I'm not a landscape expert, but they would grow much higher than that.
Yeah, they would grow bigger?
Yeah, they they're proposing green giants, which off the top of my head, I don't know, but let's say 30 feet tall, they event.
All right, well, that's real, much taller than I thought.
Yeah, they're full evergreen trees.
So they would be spaced fairly close, so grows up like a fence sort of.
We have 65 plantings in in this area right here.
Green giant.
Double, double stacked.
And the only other alternative I would think, and I don't know what the owner thinks. If he put in, say, a five foot berm and a four foot fence. I think that would raise it up so nobody could see it there. Because I mean, the berm is
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Donnell, just for my notes, could you, could you say that again?
If you put a five foot dirt berm and then you put a four foot fence. And then that would, that would block off all of that, and I'm only talking about that one section.
Yeah, I will consider that, but I think our preference would be to use landscaping rather than the fencing. I think I think it would just be more aesthetically pleasing.
Okay, the, I mean, those are my suggestions, and I do have a problem, you know, with that being closed properly.
Yeah, Mr. O'Donnell.
Chairman, can I interject for one minute?
Yeah, I was going to tell Mr. O'Donnell, I really wouldn't want to see a berm much higher than the three feet. Because number one is water constraints to the trees. They're going to be planted within this barn. And those green giants, they get big very fast. They, you know, they they grow their maturity probably in 10 years to to almost maturity. And, you know, so they, they're, that's going to fill in pretty good.
Wendell, how big are the trees when they get planted? How big are those trees when they get planted? So if you have a berm, you have a three foot tree?
No, six, six to eight feet probably.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so they, that's, that's good. I didn't think that they were going to be that big.
Oh, yeah, most of them are those green.
Yeah, we don't allow three foot tall trees.
Well, I've seen them before, little ones. Okay, so that that's good, that's fine. And it's going to fill in that whole section there, right? Because the road's going bye bye.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it's going to tie, it's going to tie that whole open section from the trees up up top near 34 all the way down to that group of trees that are on 33 there.
Correct.
It's going to fill that whole area.
So it'll be less expensive and it will satisfy the issue. That's how I feel. So I mean, to me, that's acceptable.
Mr. Saya.
You know, sir, I agree with Mr. O'Donnell that there's been some deterioration of the vegetation over the years. Because I also have driven by it in my younger days, and I didn't know it was back there. And now I see everything when I'm coming down and and moving around. You know, one of the concerns I have, and I'm not not sure, the chain link fence that's there. I hear that we're talking about maybe removing it. And I would think that we would want to keep it because not just Tyse Lane across the street has residential. But across on 34, there's also some resident housing over there as well. And those folks sometimes cross that 34 and walk down, up and up 33. So, you know, you don't want to have just, you know, people wandering into the property without having that fence as sort of like a security blanket over.
I don't disagree with your assertion that potential, like my, that was my initial thought was it would be more for security purposes to keep people out. I talked about this with with Walter last week, I guess, Walt, we spoke.
That's correct.
They kind of seem to be really concerned, and if you are concerned, you know, that's perfectly valid. But I'm going to push as hard as I can to get rid of that chain link fence because aesthetically it is not in good shape and it looks ratty. So if you're, if you, you know, they're telling me they don't need the security, which is what my initial thought was. If you feel strongly that I would advocate for something new that looks aesthetically better than that chain link fence, because it is in pretty rough condition.
Well, Jen, then you also have the housing that was turned over that's north on the southbound side of of 34. People ride their bikes and so forth and downtown 34, you know, especially on Saturday mornings when it's low traffic and all that other good stuff. I mean, I think you want to keep people out. Either you repair what's there or you replace what's there.
And that's, that was in my initial thought on why I had brought this up at the last meeting. But then it through my conversation, and I don't mean to speak for you, Walt, but it was determined that by your, by your client that the security was, the fencing for security purpose was unnecessary. So we may get back to that. I personally, I mean, I'm not generally up in that area on like a Saturday or Sunday when the traffic volumes are lower. But I can assure you that I'm one of those people that come whipping around that jug handle at 60 miles an hour. So I don't typically see people walking in this area, but I'm not saying they don't. I guess I'm not there outside of like work hours during the week when the traffic is significant and I don't see a ton of people. But that's not to say that that's not true. I just am not there during that period of time. So I would, I guess, pump this back to the applicant for their, you know, rationale, because I I have to admit, and I was a little surprised that they didn't want some like physical barrier to prevent somebody from just walking through this construction yard.
Around the corner from the diner, there's also houses.
Yeah, I know.
The people want to go for a walk. They come across. They walk 33. The point is, you know, if 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 the, if the, the applicant's going to remove the fence. I think it's going to leave it vulnerable for, you know, people to just walk onto the property and not knowing that there's a do not enter onto the property over.
Yeah, well, I I would suggest that, you know, there I don't think anybody would want to encourage pedestrian traffic in this area and certainly not in front of the site. There's no sidewalk that exists there currently. It's simply unsafe for people to be walking in this area. So I too am very surprised that people would be walking in this area. I pass by the site frequently. I've never seen anybody walk in this area. I'm not familiar with anything along the frontage on the other side of Route 34 that's residential in nature currently. We have Coruso excavating across the street.
Yes, and right behind that, there's a few houses back there.
But that's it, that's, Mr. Say, that's a completely, there's a, there's another road. I mean, they have to travel a distance to get there and cross a state highway.
It's, it's, I know people that live there.
And I'm sure you do, and they cross the site to get to this
Normally, these are young professionals that rent. You know, they're starting out in life and they're very adventurous. That's all I'm saying.
I I I have not seen anybody walking across this frontage on either side of 34 or 33. In the years that I've been involved with this project, and I do live near the area. I live in Walt Township and I live close by.
Yeah, and the client, you know, everybody's had an experience where a property owner has somebody walking on their property. I mean, it's not unique to any property, period. But our clients taking a good look at it and they know their neighborhood well, so they're not, they're not concerned with somebody. You know, they they think they, that they certainly can maintain the site safely even without that there.
Chairman, I would like to see the chain link fence stay in place. And if if either replaced or repaired and let the berm and the vegetation be right behind it and built up.
Well, the the chain link fence would be behind the berm and stuff. The berm will be between the chain link and Route 33.
Okay.
Any fence would be behind the berm.
You know, a lot of discussion about the berm, about the vegetation. Sherry, I I know I defer to you. You know, if that if that fence is coming out, then something comparable has to be put in its place.
Rich, you can go.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Martin.
Yeah, we're going back and forth on this. I I personally, I don't want to really see the chain link fence there. I don't think I don't believe there's going to be that much foot traffic there, Paul, I really don't. And the green giants are going to be planted staggered, aren't they, Sherry?
Yeah, there's, um they're 10 foot on center, and yeah, they're shown as staggered trees.
And I, I, I know what these trees are going to look like in a few years, and I don't think anybody's going to be walking through them. And being on a highway like that, I just don't see who would be walking out there. I mean, I'm not saying that doesn't happen, but I just can't see happening on a, you know, that would be so infrequent. And couldn't they put no trespassing signs out there as a, another means to keeping people off the site?
Rich, you have housing residential residences across the street, across 33, across 34 and around the corner from the diner. You know, that's the point I'm trying to make. You know, there's residential in that area.
But the diner and other uses, they're not all fenced in. The recording studio is not fenced in. They're not fenced in.
Okay, board members, is there any other questions of Ms. Capone?
Um, Ms. Capone. I'm not sure if it's her area or not, but I, the picture we had up earlier showing the highways, showing the highways and everything. Now, I think it's more of a traffic question than than a a planning question, but I used to work at Earl Naval Base. And I would come down that road alongside the Alpo, the Apollo Diner. And there is a turnaround there that you can take to go across 33 onto 34. Very dangerous area. Because you've got a, you've got to time the people coming off of 34 onto 33 and the people coming down 33 converging at that, at that Y end of road to get across. Now, I was listening to, I think, Mr. Ray. He said the driveway over there, now they're going to be making a left hand turn onto 33 with these gigantic trucks. Now, I know he said the day of, time of operation is between four and five. Well, I worked at Earl and I had to be there by six. So I was intersecting that area and there was quite a bit of traffic because other people were traveling that area. Now, you're having big trucks coming down that way, ma- making them go to the left. Are we going to have more of a traffic issue there? Or did you do a survey taking that into consideration? And if so, I would like to hear it.
Mr. Ray has brought himself on and unmuted himself, so I think that he'd probably be the best witness to answer that.
Okay.
He looks ready to go.
You know where I'm talking about? The Apollo Diner right across the street?
Absolutely, Mr. Moretti. I agree with you 100%. And actually, what we're doing is going to lessen that concern, and I'll I'll explain why. Under the current situation, trucks approaching from the west on Route 33 that want to get back into the yard typically have to use that turnaround that you're talking about, which I agree with you is an issue. It's a safety issue. They have to use that turnaround to get back to Route 34 North to make the left into the Route 34 driveway. If we get our approval and we go to DOT and we get the new driveway approved at the western end of the property over on Route 33, those trucks will be able to make a direct left turn into the property before they have to make that turnaround to Route 34 North. So we will actually be removing some truck traffic from that turnaround if we get our approval. But I understand what you're saying. We thought about that, and that's why we've come up with the plan that we've come up with.
Because you will be having trucks making lefts out of the driveway, crossing over 33, meeting that traffic that's coming off the ramp from 34 at that location. Then when they get across the highway onto 33, I guess that's heading north. They're going to get into that jug handle again. So, I mean, I mean, there's going to be traffic coming down 34. Now, you're talking about the trucks that are coming back in. They're going to be coming back in at the 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 high work area, 4:00, 4:00 PM, 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM if they're coming back into the yard. So if they're coming back into the yard, they're going to be blocking up the traffic heading in the direction that they're heading if they're going to go into the 33 entrance. Am I making my sense?
No.
You you are. No, I understand the area and 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 all of those things. Absolutely. Who said he wasn't making sense? That was Christine.
I'm going to get her for that. She knows I'm making sense.
Look, I I understand the area and actually, I'm local. I drive through the area on many occasions during the week. I understand what you're saying, that turnaround is an issue. The whole interchange is an issue. The police department have told me, you know, of the multiple accidents. We've done everything we can do to try to, I can't say eliminate our impact on those conditions but to minimize our impact by closing that driveway that's closest to the turnaround over on Route 34. by closing that driveway that's closest to the turnaround over on Route thirty-four, moving it further to the west on Route thirty-three, we've done everything we can do with respect to this property and providing safe and efficient access to this property. We've done everything we can do.
Are you, are you going to be a Monday through Friday, are you going to be seven days a week?
Uh, it's primarily Monday through Friday with some activity on Saturday, but probably Mr. Vidiello or somebody else would be better to answer that question.
Because we're gonna, don't forget, we got Collingwood's on that road. So you're having, you're having people from all different directions entering that hub. Just, just, just something that I, because I, I worked at Earl Naval Base for, for three to four years, and I used to have to go with my life in hand, scoot across real quick to get past that and to get past that U-turn.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Hughes is trying to get your attention.
Mr. Hughes, yes.
I, I just want to ask, uh, Mr. Ray, the, uh, this might ease some of Mr. Moretti's thoughts. Are trucks allowed to go out of the thirty-four entrance and make a left to go down thirty-four?
There's no restriction on that, Mr. Hughes, so they are allowed to do that, yes.
So that, I mean, that might, I might, I get what Mr. Moretti's saying, because I, I eat a lot at JB's Diner, but I think if they, you know, they go out that thirty-four, make a left, that mitigates this whole going around that crazy turn.
I, I agree, and they are allowed to do it, although the traffic counts show that that activity is minimal, they are allowed to do it.
All right, just a thought, thank you.
No, I agree, I think the trucks would be going left from, on thirty-four, would head north and use the thirty-four entrance, and the thirty-three would be primarily making right, so I think the truck people that use this site are going to know what way is safer, because the last thing they want to do is go out there and have an issue with a, a automobile, so I don't have any further on that.
Mr. Roscoe. Mr. Gonzalez.
No comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Vialli.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, are we going to open the public up?
Yes, I am, but I, I wanted to see if you had any further.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Spear.
Um, before you went further, I just, I wanted to, um, wasn't sure if Mr. Hopkins was going to come back on at all, so I wanted to ask, um, if he could just discuss about, um, the tree removal calculations. I know, you know, we went through all of it for what's proposed to be removed, but they haven't really discussed much on what had been removed over the years. Um, I know they had the D E P permit in, and they got that approved, but that was with the D E P, and, um, they hadn't addressed that with the township ordinances.
So I think we did do a, a sample calculation out there, um, and I believe you reviewed it, uh, and we came up with a, um,
Yeah, we, we just, um, when I reviewed it with Joe, we just discussed what was proposed, I don't believe your numbers include, uh, it's possible I'm, I'm mistaken, but I didn't believe your calculations were for what had been removed, just what was going to be removed.
So, uh, the definition of the word is, is, um, so what we have addressed is what would be removed as part of this application, which includes um, the violation that occurred in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, Mr. Howard, whatever, the current violation that we're here for, um, so we're, we were able to, to track those because we had a survey of the property with a, a tree, um, with tree areas on it from two thousand fifteen. So we're able to address the current clearing, anything beyond that, um, it's really difficult to do because we just don't, I don't, I don't have a survey or, or tree area of that area.
Sure, so, so you're saying the entire, uh, the D E P, you know, restoration area, that's all part of your full removal acreage?
So we, the, the restoration, uh, D E P restoration area, um, there really wasn't a tree removal and compensation, like one-for-one or anything like that. It was just an, uh, uh, an area that, I guess, D E P has a prescribed, um, uh, planting schedule to get it back to a wetland or buffer area, and that's what we've used in that area, and it's a lot of, I think I testified to it, but it's, it's, yeah, four hundred and thirty whips that we're putting in that area and two hundred and fifty shrubs.
And what about, uh, we had mentioned last time about some sort of protection for that area, so everything they plant will not get eaten that year?
Yeah, we, so we had, we did not re- resubmit plans between now and the, and, and, or between the previous application and now, but we did put on the record that we would meet with you and, and, or come up with some sort of a tree protection, um, device or method that would be acceptable to you.
I mean, you know, just so you understand, it's probably would be some sort of temporary fencing of the whole area, you know, I don't think you could plant trees and shrubs, you know, and individually fence them, you'd have to do some sort of temporary fencing of the area.
I, I mean, they have to survive, I, uh, I, I don't know for sure, but I, I'm, I don't have the permit in front of me, but I'm, I'm willing to say that D E P is going to require some sort of a maintenance and, and assurance that these plantings not only are put in, but survive.
Sure.
Well, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but on the, on the project side of that area, you are, the applicant is going to be required to dedicate a conservation easement with the wetlands transition area, and you are proposing like a permanent fence along there, right? Yeah, so it's just, the, the project side of it, there is a fence there, so if there is any, you know, you'd be putting tree protection fence to existing vegetation on the other side. I don't know if we can phase where, you know, there's a requirement that that permanent fence has to be constructed, you know, within a certain time period after those, you know, plantings of the restoration, maybe that might ease that concern, Sherry, possibly.
Okay.
Sherry, what about, are these wetland plants that are going to be planted in there?
Yeah, they're all appropriate for the area.
What about the tubes that they have for wetland planting?
Right, so they can certainly use those, yeah, Walter, they're like, uh, you know, uh, uh, those tubes, you could barely see the, you know, trees sticking out of. They can use those, it's, it would really then just be the shrubs, you know, that would be an issue.
Well, they make the tubes for the shrubs, too.
Oh, okay.
They, they do, they, they, I've, I've seen them over, in one of my hay fields, they converted it to a wetlands, and they use it.
And they use them there, right, so it's really then just a matter of, of really maintenance, you know, as everything grows, they're going to have to, you know, remove them and change them to larger ones, you know, they just can't forget about all of that over there.
Okay, and again, we, we, it sounds like we've got some good ideas here, and we would certainly commit to, to doing that, um, to Ms. Spear's satisfaction.
There's no other questions of Ms. Capone from the board or the professionals, I'd like to have a motion to open the public.
I'll make that motion to open the public, Mr. Chair.
Here's seconded by Mr. O'Donnell, all in favor? All opposed. Eileen, at this time, we'll open the public for questions of Ms. Capone only.
For those members of the public that are watching the hearing, the hearing has now been opened by the chairman for members of the public to ask questions of Ms. Capone, who is the planner. Questions only of Ms. Capone, thank you. We have Guy Vestola back in the audience.
Yes.
Do you have questions?
Yes, I, I did just want to put on record, because it was, someone made reference before, that someone from the city called me up about hooking up to, to the, uh, hooking my toilets up to the sewer, uh, to, I'm sorry, to the city. Um, and that's all wonderful, I mean, I know it's an extra added expense, but that's not just the amount of water that I'm having here. Um, the amount of water that I'm having here is, I've had to clean my carpet several times. It, it has come up from that, from, from those trees being gone. Uh, it changed the whole demographic, and, and it's, all, all I am saying is that the sooner we can get this all into effect, you know, we'll have a happy days over here again. Uh, it, it's not, it's not just me hooking up to, to, uh, this, the city, uh, hook, hooking my toilets up to the, to the city to, to make my problem go away.
Or there, do you have any questions of, of the planner, uh, Mr. Vestola?
I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, that's okay, do you have any questions for Ms. Capone, based on her testimony, the planning testimony?
Uh, um, my, my question is, is, is that I, I just like to make sure that the, it, this, this new area that they're developing there will, uh, ease up the water that's been coming over from next door. Um, I, I just need to, it's just express, um, it, it to, to everybody that it's been an issue here for me.
Chairman.
Okay, okay, sir, you'll, you'll have your opportunity to have your comments in a little bit here. Uh, but this, just for questions, at this time from Ms. Capone.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Eileen, is there anyone else?
Any other members of the public wishing to ask questions of Ms. Capone? Please raise your hand. And I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to close public?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Second it.
Seconded by who, Martin?
Moretti.
Moretti, Mr. Moretti, all in favor? Okay, see you none. Okay, uh, professionals, at this time, do y'all have any questions of any of the applicant's witnesses at this time?
I do not.
Charlie?
I do not either, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all your, your questions and answers are all answered, correct?
Yeah, so I, I just want to touch on it again, like I said, I, I wasn't aware that the, the plantings were as extensive in regards to the height along that berm there, so, uh, I would say that, that in my eyes would be satisfactory in lieu of fencing for, for, uh, vehicle, you know, lights a- along Route thirty-three.
Okay. Okay, any, Charlie, are there any outside agency comments that we need to address? You know, other than what have already been addressed?
Uh, so I think, Mr. Walt, you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Mr. Hopkins, uh, the applicants already submitted their agents, outside agency approvals for the, uh, transition area wavering, um, the general permit for the two outfalls. You've gotten approval from the, uh, for the plantings for the NOV, as far as, uh, for the sewer, the site is, is existing on septic, you're not proposing any expansions to any of the buildings or the use, so as, as long as there's no change to that, I don't think Board of Health has any issue with that. As far as any proposed future connection to the, to, to the, um, public sewer, you're just waiting on approvals from, from the municipality on perspective, right?
That's correct.
And then as far as the, the fire official, you already agreed to provide Knox boxes at any gates, um, and everything like that.
Um, correct.
I think that's, that's all I have, Mr. Chair, obviously, Walt, you guys are, uh, already have your Freo Toils approval in hand, correct?
We do, quite honestly, we may have to go back and just show them, because it's been a long trip, um, and we would need to go back to them. And, um, as far as DOT, we haven't submitted to them yet, uh, to be honest with you, because it's been a long haul with you guys. Uh, and I think Monmouth County, we may have a review letter that we just haven't addressed yet. Um, I wouldn't expect that they would have any comments, because it's surrounded by state highways.
So what I would just say, Mr. Chair, is obviously there were, we'll make sure in any condition, any resolution, those would be conditions of approval. Should that, those approvals or, or requirements of those outside agencies change the site wholesale, you know, the applicant would obviously have to come back to the board for, you know, amendment of any approval, but, um, that's, I, I think as far as outside agency, you know, we have all that stuff covered.
Um, and we also, on the interior, uh, some of the dry aisles, we're not going to require them to do paving, am I correct?
No, the fire official seems satisfied from my perspective, as long as they provide a, uh, you know, thirty, forty-foot tracking pad into the site from Route thirty-three, um, you know, to meet the heavy-duty paving requirement that's required in the ordinance wall. I, I have no exception to the, the granting of that circulation, I'll have to pave throughout the site.
Yeah, so we, we previously committed to extending, uh, we currently have a concrete one, and we will extend an asphalt one as well.
Any further from the board members?
Mr. Dance, I have one quick question for Charlie. Charlie, when that other driveway is approved down on the west end, uh, on the apron, what's, uh, more quiet? Asphalt or concrete, when the trucks are going in and out?
So, Mr. Ray, can you correct me if I'm speaking out of turn here, but I'm pretty sure DOT, uh, prefers a concrete apron within the right way, which is what they are showing with curbing along there, um, as far as that into the site, um, I think asphalt, as long as it's designed in accordance with the heavy-duty requirement for the township ordinance, I, I have no issue with that internal to the site.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else from the board? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up to public for comments. Do I have a?
Motion to open.
What?
Motion to open to the public.
Okay, motion by Mr. O'Donnell, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Martins, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Eileen, at this time, we'll open the public for comments.
Members of the public, the chairman has just opened the hearing up for comments on this application, if you have any questions or comments, please raise your hand. Mr. Vestola?
Okay, Mr. Mr. Patel.
You're muted. We can't hear you, sir, you're muted.
Yes, is it better now? I just want to, I just, I just want to thank everybody in advance. I know you put the time and effort into this for it to be, um, successful for all of us, I want to thank everybody again, thank you.
Mr. Vestola, I, I, I think my board engineer, you know, they, we've been working on trying to get this cleaned up for, for many years now. And I, I believe once the stormwater management goes in there, I, I believe he's pretty sure that's going to straighten out a lot of your stormwater problems that you're having. And so, you know, I, I think that will.
Okay, and I just want to thank, and I just want to thank everybody in advance, because I know this has been ongoing, and, um, I, I, I've been, I, I, I've been, uh, here just knowing that you're going to make the right decisions for all of us. And I'm sure we're going to be successful, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else want to make a comment from the public?
Any other members of the public wishing to comment on this application, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, can I have a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Hughes? Second, Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Charlie, you have any final comment?
Uh, the one final comment, like I said, obviously, um, you know, Mr. Vestola brought up a great comment, obviously wanting to see the improvements get done as quickly as possible, I think, you know, when we get to a vote, when it happens, whenever that next meeting is, I think the board needs to consider possibly, you know, some type of time restriction, just to get this, keep this, keep the application moving along, once we get the outside agency approvals. Obviously, like I said, I think it's in everyone's best interest for this to get built and constructed, especially the stormwater management as soon as possible.
Jennifer?
No, a- after all this time, back and forth and back and forth, they have addressed all of my concerns.
Thank you, dear. Any further comments for the board before Mr. Michael does his summation?
No, sir.
Well, okay, Mike, you want to do a summation?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to bore you or put you through any type of long summation. The application itself, as the board knows, has gone on for a long period of time. It predates even my representation of the applicant. Um, we've started after this application was submitted with several informal workshop meetings, multiple workshop meetings with your board professionals. It was very helpful that they were able to take the time to meet with us each time. Uh, I know it was a bit of back and forth, and as Jen said, it took us a while to get here, but I think the site, uh, from the But I think the site uh from the initial proposal has changed drastically. Uh, mostly at the direction of the board and the board's consultants. So um, with that being said, a- and with the fact that the applicant, you know, the testimony on the record is that the applicant has met the burden, and, and I think some of the only issues that were outstanding tonight and maybe at the prior meeting where, where there was no clear consensus. Even from the board members, there were, there was some debate on whether the applicant would do X or Y. And, and the applicant's always been pretty willing to modify the plan, as you saw. Our whole modification from the beginning has really been at the request of the board. Uh, so, you know, we would ask the board to please look favorably on this application. To, to let the landowner continue to operate here. They've been a longtime member of the public, of the community here in Howell. And, and I think with these improvements, i- it will be uh, you know, all that much better for the board. And if there's any other questions, I think the only items that were really outstanding, Mr. Ray, I went through his letter briefly. He really addressed each item in his letter and his testimony. I can have copies of that letter submitted to the whole board. They already have his report, it's already part of the record. We're just talking about his short summary letter, so I'll have copies of that submitted to the whole board. Other than that, I'm not aware of any outstanding information items to the board. And I don't know if the board uh would be able to do maybe a straw poll to indicate whether there's anything missing that they think they need to see. Or whether the board is all satisfied before we conclude for this evening, but then we'd be prepared to return whenever you saw fit for a vote.
Mr. Tropwe, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
I have no objection to a straw poll. I think the issues have been well ventilated. I believe as uh Mr. Vidiallo said, that the um earlier meetings, while initially some were very contentious. Resulted, I think, in a much better plan. I don't have a problem if you wish to poll the board, Mr. Chair, just in general. Couple of outstanding issues left, very minor issues. You know, perhaps we can give Mr. Vidiallo a heads up if there is anything else. You know, we've pretty much gone through the fence versus berm issue, and I think that can be left at the time of vote. But beyond that, if any of the other board members, uh, Mr. Chair, have any other comments, we can just go down the list and see. Uh, if not, then we can conclude for the evening.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell?
Well, yes, I'd like to say that when I did a site inspection with Mr. Hughes, the owner uh, he was very pleasant. He was very accommodating. He answered all my questions and uh, you know, didn't give a hard time at all. And he was very forthcoming. And I agree with Charlie that we should expedite this case because at a time that it's been on the calendar. And hopefully, you know, in January, we could get him back as soon as possible.
Okay, Mr. Hughes?
Uh, my main concern throughout this really has kind of been the whole fence issue, but I do, after listening to, to, you know, tonight about the berm and all the plantings. I'm actually thinking that this is going to even be a, a nicer aesthetic for us. And um, other than that, I'm, I'm good. I, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Um, nothing, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Rusko?
That's okay.
Okay, Mr. Moretti?
Oh, I'm fine.
Mr. Martins?
I concur with you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to see something, and I'm su- sure Sherry can work it out with the applicant with that one western entrance where we can conceal the traffic, uh, the lights. Other than that, I, I, I'm hundred percent more inclined to go along with this application with the berm, the way it's presented on this plan, I think it's going to look a lot better. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Sayah, say the best for last.
Mr. Chairman, um, you know, I've, well, limited that I've listened on this application and I, I part- I participated. You know, Mr. Moretti bring, you know, his experience, Mr. O'Donnell brings his experience, and then I have my own experiences, right? And uh, you know, that, it's, it's a very, and for me, that's a very sensitive location with the, the Collingswood. With the old um, you know, lumber eighty-four that was across the way and, you know, the, 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 um diner that's there, the residents that are in that area, and the fact that the traffic has really built up significantly over the last ten to fifteen years. You know, all of that is coming together. Um, you know, I like the fact that this site is being remediated to a certain degree, you know, that's going to satisfy everyone. Um, I just, I'm still on the fence whether or not the chain link still needs to be there or not. And it just, for me, I believe it still needs to be there. Um, you know, if, I'm still not convinced that, you know, a berm's going to be good enough because it's going to look like a park. You know, and people are going to go, oh, look at this park. We don't, won't even know what's on the other side of the fence, right? At least when we had, when, when it was trees there, when Mr. O'Donnell used to own across the way. You know, that chain link fence gave you an indication that that was a property that was being used by someone else. You know, um, you know, trying to sugarcoat this thing and whitewash it, that it's not an industrial site by removing the fence might be an issue and, you know, come long term. I don't know. You know, I'm just trying to, you know, convey the right, you know, message when it comes to what that property and what that site is. Over.
Got you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say one last thing, that if everything's met that we're proposing, you know, I, I could say that my answer would be yes. And also, Matt, a couple of years ago, maybe three, we applied for a traffic light right there where the Apollo diner is, and the county denied it. Now, you, do you, or can you tell me, has that traffic light been resubmitted?
You, uh, well, that would be the DOT because that's uh state roads there, but um you know, I, I think that's a major project and I, I don't foresee that happening anytime soon.
Well, I was hoping that the town would propose it every year, stick it in their face, because that's a place we need it.
I think there's a matter of the types of accidents that happen at that intersection. Um, and uh, you know, you're probably looking at a total realignment of both roadways to do it. So I think it's mostly in the state's hands.
But do we have anything official that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Maybe you could check and see. That would be some, some good news, because I'd like to see that there regardless of anything, because it is a problem. Thanks.
Okay, um, Mr. Viall, Viall?
Yes, how are you?
Been here too long.
That, that, that's all right. And, and you know, I thank you all for your quick comments. Um, I, I, I know that we can reconsider this during a vote, just with regard to the comments about a chain link fence. Obviously, if the board's consensus was that they would at least like to see that chain link fence remain right where it is in that area. That's certainly, you know, entirely up to the board, but i- if the board wanted that fence to, I know, I know Ms. Beam had said that, you know, that wasn't something she wanted to see, but, you know, in addition to offering you the berm, the plantings, the green giants, uh, the double stacked row of plantings, which aesthetically does paint a different picture. If people wanted the chain link fence to remain right there in front of that, that, that's something we can arrange also.
I have no interest in seeing that ugly fence stay there. I, I don't disagree with the concern. But I am not, that, that fence is an eyesore and it needs to come down. So either it needs to be replaced or, you know, and I would ask that it be replaced with something aesthetically more pleasing. But I do not support that fence remaining along that frontage. It is hideously unattractive.
Underst-
Yeah, let me ask a question, Mr. Sayah and Jen. If, if they replace that fence behind, you know, in, in just certain parts, they don't have to run it continuous all the way around. But just in certain parts, could it stay a four foot fence? If, it wouldn't be required to go to an eight foot fence, correct?
I, I don't, I mean, technically, it's supposed to be a four foot fence fifty percent open because it's in the front yard. Um, so, you know, the only reason that it was even suggested to increase in height up to the eight feet was for security reasons. Because a four foot high chain link fence does not prevent anybody from getting in. Um, you know what I mean? It's easily, it's easily climbable. Um, which is why I was initially looking for something solid and higher. Um, for their security, they're telling us that that's not something that they need. Um, but I would not advocate the existing chain link fence to stay. It is not in good shape and it's unattractive.
When you're coming down thirty-four south, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And you have that first entranceway, you know, off of thirty-four. That entranceway is delineated by the fact that the chain link fence shows you the left and right limits of the entranceway. So, but let's just take it away, let's leave it open, and let it come and go.
I, I was talking about thirty-three, not thirty-four.
Thirty-three, not thirty-four.
Right. I had nothing, the fence that I'm talking about is the stretch on thirty-three. And I'm not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing that, that something, you know, that it was, the suggestion was based upon concern for security. Well, all I'm saying is that if that's something you feel strongly about, I totally understand why. I would just ask that the existing fence, which is in a state of disrepair, be eliminated. And then if you feel strongly, I am perfectly fine with the fence being replaced. But the existing fence, given all of these other things that we're doing on the site, wa- is just, it's, it's kind of I don't even know what the word is. It just doesn't fit into like the aesthetics of what we're trying to accomplish along the roadway. I'm not suggesting that it remain wide open. That was the whole intent of the suggestion to begin with. But what I'm seeing on the thirty-three side is something that is not i- it's not attractive. And if you're really concerned about people going into the site, you know, a four foot chain link fence is not going to stop them. We would need something taller and solid. That's my position. I mean, even like the pool fence, you can't have those big links because they're worried about people climbing them and getting them into a pool. So from a security standpoint, that was why I had suggested the eight foot and solid fence behind the berm for security reasons. So I'm not disagreeing with you that something needs to be there. I just don't, I would prefer seeing something other than the existing chain link fence.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Maybe a hy- uh, maybe a hybrid of what's on thirty-four versus what's on thirty-three. And that would might be a, an acceptable solution, you know, for my concerns. Over.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, if I could just jump in real quick one last time, I just want to make it clear. And Mr. Mr. O'Donnell kind of talked about it, about, obviously, we want to get this to a vote and, and, you know, get this to move in. Um, I think the application, as far as uh, from the applicant's perspective, is only for use variance and preliminary major site plan. I think we're at the point where they've addressed all my concerns pending all outside agency approvals where we can be granting use preliminary and final. And there needs, you know, we need to consider, you know, resolution compliance needs to be within X amount of time. And we need to get to, you know, um, submittal and pre-construction with the township with X amount, with, within Y amount of time to get this and keep this moving along. You know, I don't want to just be preliminary now. Then there's a, a duration of extensions for the preliminary before they have to come back for final. I think we should consider it all now and put some kind of language in any approval with time to act to get this thing built.
But Charlie, I don't think they advertised for the final site plan.
Uh, they did not?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
Mr. Vidiallo, can you check me out on that? I don't have a full.
Yeah, I'm checking right now. Standby. No, we did include final, preliminary and final in our notice.
Okay, all right. The point's well taken, Charlie.
Because we knew, because we knew Charlie was going to ask for that, that's why.
There you go. Oh, no, I'm, it, it's always good to be prepared. I, okay, and having said that.
I, it, it's not, it's not final. It's just very preliminary major site plan, that's all, not final.
Well, no, I understand that, but I, I asked Mr. Vidiallo to check his notice, and he advertised for final. We can, uh, Eileen, can you just double check us? But if that's the case, then.
Because on, on the, my reading, it's only preliminary.
Their notice does read that they are going for preliminary and final major site plan approval, use variance approval and related bulk variance approval and any such other relief variances or approval as the board or its consultant deemed to be necessary or appropriate.
Okay, is that the?
And that was the latest, that was the latest notice done in November.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it was um renoticed at least once, I believe.
Yeah, I know, but what about the, the reading in, in the applica- you know, the application?
On the agenda.
On the agenda, because it just says, it, it does not say final.
Well, the notices, I'm sure, went out, preliminary and final and use variance and other bulk variance relief. And if that's the case, the notices would control.
Okay, the notices would control. Okay.
But having said that, so, having said that, there's still some loose ends that the applicant will have to address when he comes back for a final?
Yes.
Final vote. Charlie, I have a question. Do you, do you think, and Jen, that should there be maybe a sketch of some sort presented with a proposal for the board to consider as to fencing slash berm? So that there can be a visual on us at all, or is that something that is um over and above? Because I don't know if we're ever going to get to a point where someone will approve the application with fence, without fence. I thought maybe if there was a visual exhibit, perhaps the board can look at it and say, this is the way we'll go versus other, some other way. Comments on that?
Charlie?
I mean, really, my, my concern with the light of the site traffic was uh, you know, especially what Mr. Chairman said, where the intercept, where the internal site circulation drive kind of tees. There is existing vegetation there, but it's like high trees and there's not a lot of understory. I think the applicant has indicated that they will provide, they're already showing plantings interspersed within that, but they will provide some additional plantings between the circulation drive and that, and that canopy. Um, and like I said, along the, the berm that's proposed, um, I, I didn't understand that those plantings were going to be up to you know, twenty to thirty feet high. You know, uh, from a light perspective, I'm satisfied with what they're proposing and the representation they put on the board. It really just comes down to whether or not, you know, the board thinks they need the fencing from a security standpoint.
I, I mean, I'm typically, this is the type of stuff that we defer to Shari to make sure, you know, the berm and the plantings are what she wants to see um in the buffer area. And, you know, she hasn't let us down so far, so I'm fairly confident that she'd be more than capable of reviewing it. I think it may be in their best interest to get Shari something, whatever it is you guys are going to propose along that area, whether it's going to be supplemental planting or whatever. I, I don't even, I can't even begin to fathom. But, you know, at least she can have the opportunity to have looked at something in advance of the next meeting and then can say if she's satisfied or not, you know, with what the proposal is. I mean, obviously, you guys are going to have to ultimately make a decision on whether or not, like how you feel about the fencing for security purposes. I agree with Charlie that throughout the testimony, I'm fine with the berm and the plantings from a lighting standpoint and the headlights and what have you. So you guys are going to have to decide what you guys want to see in terms of fencing or no fencing. But the landscaping, you know, I, we typically defer to Shari, and I think that we should continue to do so.
Absolutely.
All right, so uh, Mr. Hopkins and I will certainly, you know, uh, discuss additional plantings. I'm assuming you'll, you can come up with a plan, or we could discuss first, and then you'll put something together.
Yes, I would suggest uh, we meet, or at least maybe Joe, we have landscape architects in house, so maybe talk to Joe first. He comes up with something and then run it by you.
Sure. Um, real quick, what, what um is the disposition of that area there? Like that whole area along the circulation drive um outside of the wood line, is that going to actually be lawn that's mowed? Or just like, kind of, you know, what are they going to do with that area?
Yeah, I was a little optimistic. I had my plans folded up.
I'm sorry. You know, so, you know, like I had mentioned earlier, when Joe and I were out on site, it was very hard to tell where the, you know, site improvements were stopping and then where we had room to plant. So now going back out there, i- it will give us some more room now that we see where the line is. So now going back out there, it will give us some more room now that we see where the line is. But yeah, I'm just wondering, just looking at it right now. What will that area be?
Yeah, I think, I, I don't know if we've determined it, but I think it is an opportunity for additional landscaping.
Okay.
I guess, Mr. Chair, can I just have a, like a procedural question or Ron maybe? So we're, the board is not taking an action on the application this evening, correct? So is this something that can be resolved before the applicant comes back for a formal vote so that this can be fleshed out at that point in time? Or before that? I mean, I guess it depends on when you carry the application to, right? But if it's being carried to, you know, whatever, end of January, is this something that Walter, you think you can get resolved in advance of coming back? Just because it would be nice to just put the issue to bed once and for all before the board takes an action. And then it's not, are we voting preliminary and then waiting for them to do this for final? Or are they going to do everything at once? At least just kind of puts that issue to bed.
Yeah, I, we can commit to that, unless you're going to meet on the first, uh, and, and schedule us, which I think is unlikely. I, I don't think that this is a, a, a huge amount of work to do. And we'd be committed to doing that and getting it worked out so that, um, the Spiro has something that she can she agrees to and that we could at least present at the meeting, if not get, um, submitted prior to.
Great.
Real quick, Eileen.
Yes?
I know, we have a meeting next Monday, right?
Yes, we do. And there's two applications scheduled.
Yeah, but thi- this wouldn't take that long. Is this something that y'all could have done by Monday?
I, I really don't see how that's possible. I, I'll say it for Ms. Spiro. I'll say instead of Ms. Spiro, how's that?
I'll also put in there that if you're putting off the vote for somebody to certify, they have several meetings to go through to certify. If you're going to put him on next week, that's kind of like asking the impossible.
I know. Okay. It'll be into the ne- next year then.
Are, are we going to, do we know if we have any changes on the board? Is that going to affect anything or?
I have no idea. I won't know until January, but there are three members that are up. And two of them can vote on this application, so that is a consideration.
What is the last meeting date we have this year, Eileen?
Next Monday, the twenty-first.
Oh, my gosh. Well.
Yep. Okay. We, they, they can't do it. The professionals can't get it done in time. So, you know, it, it doesn't matter anyway. But I, I do understand Mr. Say's concerns and I, I would like the applicant to look at, you know, it, it doesn't have to be the whole perimeter, but before is not going to be bothered, you know, that, that's going to stay the same if I'm. I believe I heard everything right. Thirty-four is going to stay the same. So with the fencing there, that's going to stay. It's thirty-three that the concern is. And they, they might do a turn back, you know, just go in the driveway, go down a couple of fifty, sixty feet with the fence, you know, something deter from, from the entrance. Because I don't think people are going to go across those woods to get into the site. I really don't. And then by them enchancing the landscaping, I, I really think that's going to be a deterrent. The issue would be right up next to the entrance going out to thirty-three is where you would have the issues that people want to trespass.
That's right.
Just my personal opinion, so.
Mr. Chairman, you know, that's right. Your, your personal opinion matters and, you know, the more and more, you know, we contemplate this, you know, there's people that drive there, they're disoriented. They pull over, they pull off to the side. I mean, just two Saturdays ago, I was in the turnaround that Mr. Moretti talked about. I wound up with a head-on coming down on me right since I came out of the turn. Uh, you know, I had sway off to the right. I mean, it, it, it's.
I know, that whole intersection there is crazy. It, it's really one of the morphidated intersections that we have in the state. I think we have it, you know, but you know, it, it is what it is. People don't know how to yield. People don't, don't yield properly there either, so. There's a whole lot of issues with that intersection.
They get very confused. They don't know where they're going. They get turned off, you know, whether they're on thirty-three. Whether they go straight down thirty-four head-on traffic or come over the hump and then feel that they made a mistake because everyone's going to Collins Wood, you know, and so forth. That's the point I'm trying to make, you know, it's.
I, I agree. I agree.
I'm Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I may interject. You know, I've just, you know, as, as the board attorney, I'm looking and I'm thinking and I, I have an, I want to ask Mr. Vidiello. You know, Mike, it seems that the board is, from what I can tell, looking favorably upon the application. We're not going to know what the composition of the board will be next year. I don't know whether or not, Mr. Chairman, whether or not the board feels, or if the applicant feels that tonight, perhaps, taking a vote now, I realize we open with, we have how many members, Eileen, right now? We have six? Or do we have only five?
Oh, five.
Oh, we have six that are eligible to vote. We have seven members here.
Right, there's, Mr. Say is not eligible tonight.
O'Donnell, Gonzalez and Nansen are all eligible.
Is Mr. Say eligible also? Yes.
He's not eligible.
No, I want to make sure you get it right before you do this. That's the bottom line.
Okay. And I mean, I just, I'm putting it out to Mr. Vidiello. Would you, would you consider and would Mr. Chairman, would the board consider? And again, it's, I realize it's a little different than what Charlie was saying, but you know, perhaps on a final site plan review to deal with the fence versus the berm issue. You know, I'm just not trying to prolong the application. It's just that the members that have heard this application are in the best position to resolve it one way or another versus putting it over in a January and possibly having three new members who will have to read the cold transcript. And Mike, what are your thoughts on that? You're muted. There you go. Yeah. No, thank you. So I, I thought the issue really, it seemed like the, the last issue was the fencing. There was some discussion of putting in a big new expensive fence along the property line. I think my engineer talked a little bit about why, you know, the applicant's constrained and can't really do that. I think you've heard some other testimony about the lighting impacts are mitigated without it. So the applicant does propose a very substantial buffer and very substantial double stacked green giants that he's willing to supplement further, which will be a very aesthetic and substantial buffer to buffer the site from the roadway areas. There's been some testimony that if, on top of that, a fence must remain or be added. And, you know, we're trying to be as accommodating as we can. So if that was really the case, we would let the existing chain link fence also remain. So, you know, if, if we had an indication from the board on how they felt about those two options, I, I, I understood that those were the options we were talking about. But, you know, right now, I, I, I think you do have another member that would read in the transcript, I guess. He'd have, they'd have to read in to get Mr. Say to be able to vote and some of the other members, correct?
Yes.
That's right. Yes. Yeah, um, you know, as much as the applicant does want to wrap things up, I mean, we've noticed for final two. I think we'd prefer to wait until the other members were all eligible to vote too.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Okay, Eileen, what kind of dates do we have in January?
January eleventh is the reorg and we have Yeshiva Emma Kator was carried to that night.
Why don't we put them on there? It, it's just a Yeshiva on there, correct? Why don't we put them on there? Because we should be able to wrap this up pretty quick.
All right. I'm going to need an extension of time as well.
You're muted, Mr. Spiro.
Sorry about that. When I click on my other monitor, then my button, my mute button stops working. So you said the eleventh?
Yes.
Yeah, and the extension of time would be fine. We would grant an extension of time. The board has to act under the municipal land use law under this application until January eleventh. If there is, or if there are new members, I guess, would they read in, I guess, any new members?
We have to.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I won't know if there's new members till the day of the ninth. So to get them to re-up again, you're talking, they have two days.
I'm almost thinking Mr. Troply would say it is the way to go, but.
It's exciting reading.
I, I agree too that we do it now. Yeah.
That's what I think.
Do it now. You have the power to say six is good for you, if, if I'm not mistaken. And, uh, we do it now. Now we don't have to worry about the eleventh.
And then you just go back to final.
Hey, Wendell, could I just maybe make a suggestion? I mean, we've been going at this now for almost three hours. Maybe we take like a five-minute break and give them a chance to kind of regroup. Come back.
I'll confer with my client right away.
Okay, thank you.
Great move, Jen.
Five-minute break.
Okay, no, ten minutes. Make it a ten.
Ten, ten minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, ten minutes.
At this time, the board is going to take a ten-minute break. They will be back at nine fifty-three. Thank you. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Hey, Miss Troply.
We're waiting for Mr. Vidiello, who has just returned.
Mr. Vidiello. Vidiello.
Yes, um, I've discussed it with my client. Hang on, I'm just waiting for one item. We've gone through a number of items. Okay, so, um, we appreciate the position that everybody's in because the end of the calendar year creates a lot of complexities going into January. So with that being said, if the board felt that it was best to vote tonight, uh, the applicant understands and, and we would do that. We would just ask the board to understand the applicant's position. We've already given a brief summary. We've given our reasons. Uh, we understand some of the other competing points of view, but we would just, uh, ask the board for the, the, uh, the consideration in this instance. But that's fine if that's what the board wants to do tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Now, can I just, can I just double check? There's six, there's six members tonight that can vote, correct? Can you just go through the members that are eligible?
Yes, the members that are eligible are Mr. Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Gonzalez and Nansen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I would implore the board to move this application forward. I don't believe you need me to make it happen. I just have that one concern and I believe you have a little bit of time to just address that concern and then get the vote and let's move on. Over.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I just make one quick comment on it? So it isn't atypical for this board to consider enhancement of a buffer as a condition of approval. I think that's something that can be worked out with, um, the various professionals and with Shari. Uh, as far as the fencing for security, um, I think it's possible the applicant could put signs on the front just private property, you know, uh, no, no trespassing. Also possibly maybe some invasive type of species or something. Um, no, not a base.
No, Shari, I was talking about hostile vegetation.
Hostile, sorry.
That, we used to use that term all, 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 all the time around the basins to discourage people from going into a basin that we didn't put a fence around. Barberry or something with thorns that whatever you, I would defer to you, but something that would discourage people from walking through there. I mean.
Pyracampha.
Yeah, I mean, there's some choices, but then you'd have to put like a, a full, you know, uninterrupted row of it, right? I mean, we don't want to put that in front of the green giants. That's not going to look nice.
No, but the holly is not exactly fun to walk through, right?
Right, but the holly is going to be, um, spaced out.
But still, so like we could come up with some kind of plan landscaping wise that would at least make it less attractive for individuals to enter.
There's probably lots of green briar there.
A dog or something. That would work too.
Yeah, there might be green briar in the woods anyway, so.
We could figure something out.
So, and then the last comment, Mr. Chair, I would just say, and I'll let Mike make a comment if he thinks this is something that is unrealistic. But, um, should the board make a motion to approve and rule favorably on the application? I would think, um, you know, go in the full bore for the, the, the final site plan. I like to see maybe like within six months having, uh, you know, a resolution compliance submittal to the board and then within a year, you know, um, con-, you know, going for construction permits to, to move this forward to construction with the township. Is that unreasonable, Mike?
You said six months to have a resolution compliance, you know, submittal to the board and then a year. So another six months, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. You know, the, the DOT application is the tricky one as, as a lot of my applications are. The DOT is always our critical path. We have, we, we are ready to submit to the DOT but have not because there was a lot up in the air. We're willing to move quickly. I just, I, I don't want to, um, you know, they're working remotely too. You know, I'm sure you have a lot of applications dealing with them. We could put in a submission there, a submission deadline to the DOT and we could have your other dates work. You know, so that if the DOT is still not issued, they get dragged with the DOT, I guess.
Yeah.
I think the intent here is just to make sure the board doesn't take an action and then a year from now, you're back asking for an extension considering it's taken like two years to get to this point. And it's here on a code case, like we really want to see this done and the improvements in place so that, you know, Matt can close his file on it. I think that's really what the goal is. I, I don't know what the specific language would be, but, you know, and I know you have timeframes under the MLU. What we're looking for is a commitment to keep moving this forward and not so much rely upon like the, the two-year with the three, one-year extensions and whatever you, so like five years from now, we're still talking about this.
We, that makes sense. How about if we, if we did the, we did the, uh, resolution compliance submission within six months of adopting the resolution? You know, it being understood that if the DOT approval is still outstanding, that will be a noted item in the compliance submissions. Because I have, I have a lot of, you know, we can get a lot out of the way with the resolution compliance mission, even if that one item's outstanding. And then we, what we would do is we would also make a representation to submit the DOT promptly after any approval the board grants. And to, you know, uh, work towards concluding that application, you know, not delay it or adjourn it or anything like that.
Is that the only thing?
I believe that Mr. Klemm's timeframe is, is certainly achievable. We would just ask that the DOT be excluded from that. We could have everything wrapped up. Uh, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we would have DOT in that timeframe, but, you know, we have had, you know, DOT take eighteen months plus. So if that would be acceptable, I think we can commit to Mr. Klemm's timeframe with exclusion of DOT.
Well, let me, Charlie, does that, the, the detention base is close to thirty-three. Is that going to be required by DOT there? Is that going to be part of DOT or is that?
That's just, that's just internal to the site. That's to address our land use ordinance and, and our, uh, you know, major development requirements. So that can all get started and get put in. The final location of the driveway can be subject to DOT approval.
I, I would, I would not agree with that. We, we recently had an application and I know it's not under, not under the jurisdiction, but we did recently have an application in Bordentown with a detention basin onsite that was not connected to, uh, DOT. And, and they started reviewing it and had comments on it.
Yeah, I, I've, I've had that happen in the past. Yeah, I've, I've had that happen in the past, not on every application, but I have definitely had. We weren't thrilled about it, but I've definitely had the exact same thing happen.
See, my only, my only concern is time of the essence with that detention base because that's what, that area is what's flooding your neighbor. You know, the, the water runoff is going there, that is flooding the neighbor. And if, if we could get something in action to keep from flooding him for water runoff, you know, that's what I'm looking at.
You know, if, if, if the DOT, we expect, you know, we've made sure our professionals comfortable that the DOT will most likely approve this. We wouldn't go forward without that, you know, understanding. But really, that DOT approval is going to be a critical part of this application. If the DOT for some unforeseen reason has a big change, we would promptly come back to the board and revisit that whole change with you. We don't want to be in a position where we half-constructed something or not fully constructed something under this approval. Because the board might have a lot of other issues if, you know.
But Mike, I mean, in fairness, like this has been going on forever and this poor man is being flooded out. And I for one am not comfortable with making him wait 18 months to get relief from a flooding condition that was caused by an enforcement action. Like you need to do something. And I understand your concern with the DOT and trust me, I know that the state is, is very quick to shut people down, but not really hopping on getting their own work done, but, but we need to come up with a creative solution to get this to the finish line. Because I can't, you know, I'm not comfortable sitting for two years waiting for this poor gentleman to be able to flush his toilets. Like that's not an acceptable condition. We have to get this resolved. So if, if regardless, basing in, basing out, whatever, let's get everything else resolved and, and buttoned up in six months. Hopefully the DOT will, you know, by some miracle, get through the process. I'm, have a lot of confidence in John Ray's office. They have a good relationship with the DOT and hopefully can make that process move along. And then six months later, you know, have the construction permits pulled. But I, I am not comfortable in like this dragging out indefinitely under some, because there's a real, real issue immediately adjacent that was caused by actions taken on the site that need to be mitigated as quickly as possible.
I want to echo that from, from Jen. Sorry to jump in, but
No, I was fine.
Had, had the neighbor come to my office and told me that there was a flooding issue, this would have been pushed even more to this board than it was. So we're talking two and a half years. The better part of where the board has definitely done their action to, to push this forward, but had I known that there was a complaint next door, you know, that never came to my office that I'm aware of.
Because he's a good neighbor.
This is a, this is a bigger issue and waiting another 18 months, I, I find to be a, a tough pill to swallow.
I will tell you that, let me, so I understand the DOT is challenging, but I could tell you that in another community, there was an urgent need for the site to move forward while the DOT permit was pending and while it's not a typical situation, the town in that instance allowed an applicant to move forward and do some improvements while the DOT permit was pending. And they did wind up getting their permit probably six months after the improvements were installed. But we need to think about a creative way to get this over the finish line because we can't wait two years for this to happen.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. I strongly agree with Mrs. Bean and I strongly agree with Matt. And Mr. Howard, do you have any other comment?
No, I just want to make it clear that I, I had no idea that neighboring properties were affected and this is directly due to the violation. You know, the tree clearing in this area. I mean, that's unacceptable.
Right, I understand. So I agree with Mrs. Bean and, and Mr. Howard and I think that's the way it's got to go.
Well, we could submit a phasing plan that would show you how we would phase construction on the site. If, we would hope that the DOT would act quickly and it won't even become an issue. But if we're still without DOT approval, we could create a phasing plan that we could submit that would show you how we would proceed.
Is that acceptable, Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm naive on this here. What does the DOT have to do with the waste management basin? It's on their property.
We don't know that they are going to have jurisdiction over the basin. There was just an indication that on some, some, you know, unique situations, they have reviewed the basin as well. I, you know, I, I agree with Charlie. I, I find it highly unlikely in this instance that they're going to take on that level of review. They're going to review the driveway relocation, but they have been super slow. The state in general has been super slow in everything that they're doing. So, you know, I think that it's a good suggestion that Mr. Vidiello brought up to say, you know, make a commitment to Charlie's timeframe and if the DOT is dragging their feet, which they have been known to do, we can come up with a phasing schedule to get some of these improvements in place to help mitigate that neighbor's concern.
I, I, I tend to, I tend to agree with you. I mean, we have to take care of this guy. That's crazy. I agree with, with all of yous.
Okay, so at this time, what's the pleasure of the board?
Can I just interject one thing? While Mr. Vidiello did advertise for preliminary and final, the application was for preliminary and the fees were only paid for preliminary. So I did mention that to Mr. Tropoli and he has a suggestion as well.
So Mr. Vidiello, I, I'm making an assumption that you want the board to proceed for a use preliminary and final tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the issue of a phasing plan though, I think a lot of what the board is talking about now, which is when, how much could we do without a DOT approval and when would we do it? I'm afraid a lot of that would be in a phasing plan. So I'm, I'm not sure how we could just vote and what would the condition, you know, subject to a phasing plan that's submitted that's reasonably acceptable to the board professionals? Would if? I'm afraid.
You're the one that suggested the phasing plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a workable solution, Charlie. You know, I mean, that is something we could revisit if it's there and, you know, if we make notice of it. We don't know. It's, it could be, it could not be. Who knows?
Well, can we just talk, Charlie, Charlie mentioned a little earlier. If a, a timing six months for a resolution compliance submission.
Right.
And then a pre-construction meeting six months thereafter. I think that was roughly the timeline, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what I suggested.
Right. So I think a phasing plan that we would talk about would really just really only address if the DOT approval forces certain things to lag even later than that, then the phasing plan would address those aspects of it. In other words, we have the basis of a phasing plan right now, which is what Charlie just said. So our subsequent work on a phasing plan would just really focus on if DOT pushes things even further, how do we mitigate that?
That's my understanding.
We're narrowing it a little. Okay.
So having said that, getting back to the issue of fees, do we have, if the board were to move on the application tonight as a preliminary and final, is the applicant in agreement that all fees for the final site plan approval would be paid prior to the adoption of the, you know, release of the resolution of approval?
Yeah, cer- certainly the application fees. At this point, the escrow deposit, the escrow is just the escrow. We've been replenishing it as it depletes. So for that, we would ask that that just continue in the normal course.
Sure, but when, and whatever fees are associated with a final would be.
Application fees, certainly.
Would that be suitable, Eileen?
That's fine.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So it appears that before the board, then we have the use preliminary and final.
Okay.
To resolve.
Based on findings of facts and certain restrictions, correct?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Based, based on findings of fact from the board and, you know, what, whatever the outside approvals or whatever is continued for the application. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Dan, so I got one question from Mr. Tropoli. Would you just spell it out one more time exactly what we're doing? So I understand it. Well, so I could make a motion.
With the application, as I understand it to that, first of all, the, the applicant had initially noticed for a use variance for preliminary and final site plan approval. So what is now before the board with six members that are eligible to vote would be to consider all three, the use variance, preliminary and final. And, and in many ways, this would give relief to the private, to the property owner in the adjacent lot, you know, so that the, you know, rather than dragging it out, Mr. O'Donnell. So that's basically it. They have noticed for final. The application has been, as it's been said, kicking around for a couple of years and I, and that would be a vote that a member could take tonight or can move an app, can move the application for use preliminary and final. There are obviously a number of conditions of approval that quite frankly, I will have to sit and probably talk with Charlie and Jen so that I would be absolutely complete again, and I would also send a copy of the resolution to Mr. Vidiello for his review. But there are substantial conditions of approval that would be put on the record based on the testimony that's been placed on the record over the last few meetings. I hope that answers your question, sir.
Yes, that was very thorough and I appreciate it and I got a full understanding of it.
Very good.
I would like to make a motion to approve this application for use preliminary and final. With all the conditions and agreements that have been agreed upon. So that's my motion.
I second the motion. Without being kind of redundant, but exactly what Mr. O'Donnell just laid forth, that we meet all those, all those requirements and rent and we go forward.
Okay. Okay, have a motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Hughes?
Oh, yes. Before I, I render my, my vote, I'd like to add to it, you know, distress moving that entrance on Route 33 further west. The Route 34 fence remaining and I guess the rest of it's going to come down now. The next, but I really want to stress working really hard with Ms. Spiro on making sure that berm and those plantings, I think the applicant has gotten our intent on that and what we, what we're looking for, but to work really hard with her and she'll guide you wonderfully. And also to talk about the, you know, expediting this phasing schedule in the event that the DOT approval doesn't come through. I like to see that the, that the neighbor is taken care of and that this project moves forward as quickly as possible, you know, within, obviously within legal means. With all that said, I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mertens?
Based on the findings of facts and the recommendations of our, our professionals, I'm going to vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes, based on all the testimony that's been placed on the record, the defense, it wasn't issued to me until, you know, we, we further got into the plans and the testimony there. I think it's substantial enough in the front, along 33, the plantings are burned and then adding additional plantings in behind those plantings. I, I feel that they would be able to substantiate not putting a full fence up there. I would like the applicant to, to visit that Route 30, the west entrance there off of 33 there, maybe even putting a tieback fence, you know, a slot back. Not, not a long distance, but just to kind of shield that entrance. Other than that, my vote is yes, awesome.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Vidiello, thank you, sir.
Thank you, members of the board. It's been a long time, but
Yes, sir.
You made excellent progress.
Well, the, the plan is much different than it was before it came to the board in a very, very, very good improvement. I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what, let me, uh, 10:18 already. Mr. Tropoli, you want to?
Well, Mr. Chair, there are two remaining applications. The likelihood of finishing anyone up in 12 minutes is probably slim to none and again, we would be running into the issue of we're not sure which members will be coming back. I certainly hope, you know, for the best on that, but whatever application we start tonight, I doubt could be finished. I don't know. I'll ask Jen and Charlie to weigh in, but.
They're both Mr. Cohen's cases and he is in the audience, so.
Right, so.
Why don't you bring him up?
Why don't we bring him in and let's talk?
Wow, I don't see Mr. Cohen. I see Todd.
Yeah, that's Todd.
I don't see anything.
Yeah, he's not, he, his, his video's not on, neither is his. Hey Todd, you there?
There he is.
There he is.
You're muted, Todd. There you go.
There he is.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, how are you tonight?
Good, sir. You? Sorry that.
I had better night.
Hey, I, I'm, I'm sure. Mr. Tropoli?
You know, Todd, I don't know if you heard us speaking. It's based on a timeframe. Our next meeting, our last meeting is next Monday. If we were to start either one of these cases, they'd have to be carried and then we're running the possibility of having three new members on.
I, I totally understand. I've already sent my witnesses for the third case home. What are we talking about timeframe though? It sounds like you have a lot of cases coming up and not much agenda done or scheduled.
Well, you know, as I said, next Monday is our last meeting. Eileen, what do we look like in January?
January, we have the yeshiva to finish up on January 11th. January 25th, we have two applications, one of which is Mr. Cohen's.
I'm not sure what's going on with that.
Jennifer.
What cases?
Roscoe.
Yes.
Oh yeah, that's going forward, yeah.
Eileen, the, the yeshiva. Uh, we're, we're, or Ron, we're, we're down to just the planning testimony, aren't we?
It's close to finishing. It won't take an entire night from what I can recall.
Yeah, I didn't think this one would take an entire night either, but.
Without a doubt.
Yeah, they, we could probably move one of these cases to, to the 11th. I, I think we could get both of those in. The yeshiva and one of these cases. How, how, how many witnesses do you have on Hal Associates?
I have three.
Three witnesses?
Yes.
Witnesses?
I have an engineer, Mike Antilli, I have an architect and I have a planner.
Christine Capone?
No, she's on the other kid.
Oh, okay.
Andrew Janu.
Okay. We could probably get through that.
I'm on the yeshiva application, Mr. Chairman, so if we move that.
Are you on the, are you with the yeshiva?
Yes, sir. I'm on the yeshiva application as well as candidate.
How long do you think? How long do you think your testimony is going to be on the yeshiva? I hate to ask that because it's not open, but. Christine?
Christine's on mute.
Yeah, I know.
Did you say you already sent your applicant and the professionals home for the third application?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I was gonna say, if we still had him here, that was something I think we could get through quickly.
get through quickly.
Todd thought he could get through the second one quickly.
I mean, I'll get through anyone you want quickly, um.
Mr. Chair, what I'll say, obviously it's up to the board members. I'm more than willing, if we want to start and try to get something, I, I'll stay 11 or as late as possible, I think.
He's already, he's already sent his witnesses home for the, the Michael.
You still have him here on the second one though, Todd, right?
If I may, it appears you have an opening on January 11th that Christine is also already gonna be there for, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Capone.
Christine is my witness, my key witness on, um, the Brazzi application, the third application.
Okay.
If we could somehow hear Howell Associates tonight, I think my people are still here for that. And then put the other one on the 11th. It's only a couple of weeks away. I think both clients would be happy and we can get through both before January. That would be great.
Yeah, but I don't think we're gonna get through the Howell Associates tonight. There's, there's no way.
Mr. Chairman, it is a very simple application on, on its face.
Okay, let me, Charlie, Jen?
I, I mean, it's already like 10:25. I highly doubt we're gonna get through that application in a half an hour.
Can I put them both on the 11th?
Yeah. Why not?
I mean, Charlie's given, Charlie, Charlie's given me some light at the end of the tunnel on the third application that he thinks will be quick, so that's good. And I know Howell Associates won't be that long either, so I think we can get them both done that night, as long as we can get her. I understand after what you've been through tonight, I get it. I totally get it. But I've just got clients that are behind the eight ball too.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Eileen, we move them both to the 11, but I'd like to put Brazzi up first.
That's fine. That's fine.
Ahead of Howell Associates, so.
And leave, leave yeshiva first.
Yeah, leave yeshiva, cause that, that one we should be able, uh, unless we have a lot of public.
Well, you might.
I don't know how Christine, if you've been involved, but I did get some indication from Mr. Pape that they may have some plan changes that they're gonna be bringing back to the board. So they may have more than just Christine to testify. They were gonna move them to that back building.
Yes.
Maybe they could put my applications first that night.
Brazzi, yes. The Howell Associates probably not. I, the Brazzi, I, I know we can move pretty quick.
Yeah, I'm confident Howell Associates will move just as quick too. I, I really am, but that's up to you.
Can I ask you a question? Do you want to put them next week before Oakland Road?
Put what first?
Howell Associates before Oakland Road?
Sure. I can do that.
How, how many?
Oakland Road's gonna be a controversial one. We just got a new objecting attorney.
I know, that's why I'm.
They've already asked for an extension. You know who it is. Don't have a problem, so.
Then let's put Howell Associates on next week.
That'd be great.
How many?
Cause my client, my client's texting me wondering why I'm giving him up here. So if we could get him on next week, that'd be really good.
There's two applications on next week. One is for the battery backup system that we've already partially heard.
Right, right.
And then there's Mr. Cohen's case for Oakland Road with an objector, which he doesn't think's gonna go forward anyway.
Well, it might, but we could put that last.
We could put it last and we'll move Howell Associates to second next week and then move Brazzi's to January 11th.
Okay.
I think that would work for both of my clients, yes.
Okay. Okay, okay, case number B. Okay, let me, Howell Associates going next week, right?
December 21st with no further notice. And they're good on time.
12, 21. Okay, and then the other one's going January?
11.
Okay. Okay, case number BA 20115, Howell Associates LLC will be carried to 12/21 with no further notice. Expiration date is fine. Case number BA 20102, Michael Rapkin and Sandra Brazzi will be carried to January 11th with no further notice. And the expiration is good through March 5th, 2021. Thank you.
Hi, have a good holiday. Take care.
We are, we will be staying at seven o'clock meetings, correct?
Yes, I, I've advertised for seven o'clock.
Okay, good.
Chairman, thank you very much for accommodating both of my clients. I, I do appreciate that. And I'm sure they do as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. Right, I'm sorry.
Everybody have a great holiday.
You too, you too.
I'll see you next week.
Happy holidays.
See you next week.
See you next week.
Okay.
Okay, guys, uh, any further from the board?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll see you in a week.
See you next week, seven o'clock. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
We want to make a motion to close.
Oh, yeah.
And make a motion we close.
Motion by Moretti.
Seconded by Hughes.
By Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, guys, y'all have a good night and we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Care everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.